So Mayor, it won't be a political statement if I put my sunglasses on. I've scratched my eye. And I'm calling the eye doctor. I said, "Well, the light hurts." And he said, "Then don't be in light."
Okay, I will not take it personally if you put them on.
Oh, you can take it personally. I'm just saying, whatever statement you want it to be, I guess.
Do you still see out of it, though?
It hasn't affected my vision. It's just, it just makes it start watering and then being bad. At least so far, it hasn't affected my vision.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item is the Inglewood Environmental Foundation. President Dave Henderson is present to discuss EEF matters with council. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Well, some of this EEF you've heard. We abbreviated the history, so I will go ahead and give you just a real brief history. What I handed out that'll be posted online, by the way, Thursday, is a much more detailed history of EEF, when it was formed and why it was formed. But generally, it was formed in 1995. The city started talking about redeveloping Cinderella City. And EEF was formed in 1997. One of the main reasons was to shield us from environmental liability. The ball was full of asbestos. And you really don't know what you're into until you open it up. The feeling from the attorneys was if it was too bad, a private corporation could walk away from it, the city couldn't. We also partnered with RTD for the transit-oriented development. We have to coordinate all the retail and residential development on the site. And we constructed City Center, Civic Center, excuse me. At the end of the project, EEF was set up to maintain the common areas. So that's the brief history. I do want to point out that we say that the Civic Center opened in 1999. It was actually 2000. At least, that's when RTD opened, July of 2000. Your handout has a lot more details, but I think it'd be good to turn to the second page of the handout for some really key information about City Center. At the bottom, the total area is about 55 acres. And I've got some pictures up just showing the various uses and businesses on the site. There's 387,000-plus square feet of retail space. And Alexon has 438 apartments. RTD has 910 long-term parking stalls. And the full build-out was around 2002. So again, there's some pictures of the site and the different uses. So I'm going to get into the common area maintenance. EEF is, by our bylaws and by all the agreements with all the other entities on site, we are the maintenance director. So they look to us to represent all the tenants, not just the city, cautioned or cost or apportioned among the various tenants. And in a few minutes, you'll see a spreadsheet with all the costs, how it's apportioned. The next slide will show the yellow highlighted areas are what EEF has to maintain. These are the common areas. It excludes the buildings and excludes the Walmart property in its entirety, except for the Inglewood Parkway, which bisects Walmart's property. We do maintain that. We have an easement across it.
May I ask a question about the Parkway?
Sure. On the Parkway, do we, you know, if we wanted to change the way that road looks going through there, instead of having it look like a parking lot, but have the Parkway look like it actually goes through there, are we able of doing that?
Unfortunately not. The Parkway dimension, the easement, I believe, is 20 feet wide, just enough for cars. Walmart, it was a deal killer for them when we were negotiating with them in their late 1990s. They wanted every square foot for their parking lot. So from the edge of the pavement out is Walmart, and we don't even have an easement there. So the only way that could happen is if Walmart agreed to it. And you're right, though, if we took out a few rows of parking, we could put in landscaping and make it a lot more appealing. But it is completely up to them, and honestly, I don't see them giving that up.
Yeah, because that's, that's really, I think, one of the reasons we're having problem getting people from Broadway to this area, because you hit that parking lot and people think of it as a parking lot.
And they do. You know, we can make the pavement look a little bit different, because that's under our control, but that's about all we can do from the sides, we can't.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Here's a sheet that will show the total budget for the common area maintenance, which is about $1.4 million a year, and how all the costs are apportioned among the various participants in the common area maintenance agreement. Inglewood share is about 19.9%. The other big ones, Weingarten has the most at 36.8%. It's based on the square footage of retail that they have. Another big one is Alexon, and they're at about 10%. But you can see the various costs, and we bill quarterly, or in some places, cases, monthly, I believe. I'll go through just a few of the major items that are included in the common area maintenance. The security is one unarmed guard with a car 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I've also listed the budget for all of these items down in the lower right corner, along with the city's 19.9%. Next item, snow removal. This is our largest line item. It's also the one that fluctuates the most. I've seen it as low as, I believe, $150,000 and as high as $400,000. It just depends on how much snow. This isn't a typical shopping center. RTD is open basically 24 hours a day. We have to keep sites safe for people to go from point A to point B and get on the trains and buses. So it takes a lot of effort. We really can't even stand any snow on the upper deck. If we leave it there, it'll ice up, and even when we try as hard as we do, occasionally it'll still do that. But we have to remove it quickly and all of it. Our landscape contract, we're really proud of how we kept the landscaping up on this site. And the budget for the maintaining, you know, the normal stuff, the typical routine items is $63,000. The city's portion is a little over $12,000. And I think that they do a real good job on that. Now, next slide has to do with landscape, time, and materials, we call it. This, our site's old, 16 years old. We take excellent care of it, but it's still, the systems and the planting still have a life. And, oh, there's a typo in the second line. That should be, instead of provide irritation, it should be irrigation repairs. But actually, it's, I guess it's a Freudian slip, but because it is irritating. Well, a lot of our maintenance has to do with vandalism. Pop-up heads come up, people like to kick them off. We replace probably 50 heads a year. In other systems, electrical, the uplights in the trees and the outlets, they get kicked over, and we're constantly repairing those items. But anyway, irritation repairs. I found that one about a half hour ago. Next item, litter. You know, we have to title these something. This is what we titled it in 1999 when we put together the CAM, but it's basically dayporter on the site. It also pays for portallets and trash dumpsters, which are more expensive than you would think. I think we spend $25,000 a year just on those. But anyway, the dayporters here are about 60 hours a week, seven days a week. Electrical maintenance, pretty much self-explanatory, and I've already mentioned the problem we have with vandalism. You know, in the sculpture garden, between this building and the one just to the east of us here, we have uplights in the trees. And in the, in the holiday season, we change the color of the lights. Instead of putting strings of lights in those trees, we just use the lights to uplight it. But those do get, again, vandalized. Power washing, there's a lot of square footage of concrete on this site, and we power wash every square inch of it twice a year. The tenants pretty much demand it. RTD's been quite demanding of it, too. Gum builds up, and we want to take care of it. Seasonal decorations, tenants love it. They, they really convinced, and I am too, it brings in business. The budget is about $60,000. $11,000 of it would be city money, but it gives us our holiday lights and our Christmas Our fountain, it's a focal point. It always has been. Recently, we turned it pink. We do that every year, this time of year, to support the breast cancer awareness. Doesn't take much. At the end of the season, we add a little dye into it. We have to recharge it every week, and, but we'll be cleaning it out finally. This will stay this way until we shut it down, just one cleanup of that dye. And something most people don't know is EEF rents a warehouse. It's on South La Pan Street, just a couple blocks south of us. We have since the year 2000, same place. But it's, it holds our large light poles, our lift is stored there, and the holiday lighting and tree, takes up a lot of space, and we do spend about $16,000 a year renting that space. So, staff recommendations. I know you've heard from the attorneys a couple of times, and I believe that the consensus is that EEF needs to remain as a separate entity until the COPs are paid off. We've just reiterated that here, that there's $10.5 million that needs to be, probably will be paid off in 2023. The option to dissolve EEF sooner would be paying off the COPs or designating other property as the collateral. Right now, this building is the collateral.
One question for you on that storage. Do you know how many square feet that is?
I don't.
Ballpark?
I can find out. 2,000.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh, I want to say about bidding of EEF. We, the board met some time ago, and we committed to bid the EEF items. We're getting the help of the, oh, excuse me, I'm going to forget the name of it, but there's a consultant we're using with the city to help us. Kathy, do you know the name?
The expense reduction analyst.
Expense reduction analyst. We're going to work with them to help us bid these items. Some are ready to go. I've got specifications written for most of them, so this is going to happen soon. Right now, we are still working under existing contracts. And I'll open it up for discussion.
Great, council. Rita?
I have a question back on the budget. And is that budget everything? I mean, is that only expenses, or is that income?
That's the income and expenses for the common area maintenance. There's another account, I don't have the accounting of it, but there's another administrative account. You'll notice on the line, there's a line item up there somewhere for us to manage the CAM. I'm not seeing it at the moment. There it is, administration fee. We get that money in every year to run this CAM. That goes into that administrative account. Now, there is money expended out of that account for, to reimburse the city for some of our time. So, does that answer your question, Rita?
Um, yeah, so some of this is revenue and some of it is expense?
It's all balanced. Our goal is to spend the 1.4 million. That's what we get from all of the tenants. We keep the site as good as we can for that amount of money. So yes, all of the items you see for each, like RTD contributes $379,000 every year. And we're usually pretty close to the budget at the end of the year. We have been under and refunded a few times. We have been over, in which case we use the contingency count that you see up there.
But they do pay for their fair share of them?
Absolutely. They pay. We pay $279,000, and you can see along the bottom line what everybody pays. The most would be Miller Weingarten contributes $516,000 to this. Now, they bill their tenants back for it.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I guess that's it for now.
Go ahead.
Yeah, what's not shown on there, Counselor Russell, is that the city does pay a lease payment that goes into a sinking fund, the debt service for the COPs that the, Inglewood Environmental Foundation has. But that's money in and then money back out to key government finance.
Okay, but it's different than this 100 and...
Exactly. Our debt service, or our lease payment here at the city, we pay a base lease, and then we pay interest twice a year to EEF, and that's about 1.57, almost $1.6 million.
Okay, so are some of these other people, like Walmart, RTD, are they leasing from us also?
They are not.
They own?
Yeah, Walmart owns theirs. Actually, everybody owns their property now. Weingarten actually made a lump payment into their lease. They paid their entire lease all upfront to the city back in 2000.
Yeah, and it's as good as owning it, because it's a long-term lease. I think it's 75 years.
So the 75-year lease, because I was looking at that today, they gave us $4.5 million, and that's what we're paying these payments on. Is that correct, or, for the 75-year lease?
All I can tell you is they paid their entire lease amount upfront. I didn't remember if it was four and a half, but that sounds probably right. And that was used, basically, to help build this project and the infrastructure. The sale to Walmart, the sale to Alexon, and the long-term lease to Weingarten financed all the infrastructure on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Just to clarify a little bit of what Rita was asking, is, now, everybody makes payments yearly to this fund, right?
Yes.
So this, to operate that, it's all done through the fees that are charged each year from each entity, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so Weingarten, when they paid that whole thing off, that $4,300, or 43, 4.3 million, is not a part of this annual maintenance?
That was a lump sum for the lease. This is the annual maintenance.
Okay. When it comes to the place that you're renting to store things, are you renting that from a private individual, or is this from the city that you're renting this spot from, or...
Private individual.
Private individual. At $16,000 a year, and assuming that it is 2,000 or 3,000 square feet, would there be any reason why you couldn't work a deal with the city to put a building on maybe, you know, the service facility or something like that, where at least the money comes back to the city versus just out there?
Absolutely, and we support that. We do like it being closer, but the service center's not that far away. As some of these buildings that the fire department used to use are emptied out, I think we'll explore that immediately. There's no need to give it, to let this money go outside the city if we have a building large enough to have the lift and the, and the light poles.
Cool, thank you.
Other comments or other questions or comments? I guess I have, you know, I appreciate the comment from Steve about the rental place. I just want to agree with that and see if we can't find a spot for that. But we may not have the space, I don't know. Also, I just wanted to, you know, comment about the Inglewood Parkway pavement and landscaping. I, you know, I agree with the comments that have been made, that ultimately, you know, at some point in the future, we should probably explore that possibility. I like the idea, honestly, of going to a different pavement color or something that would make it more look like a right-of-way through the parking lot rather than an extension of a lot. Maybe, and just in my mind, maybe they are differentiated already. Are the surfaces different? I guess it's like, yeah, okay. Anyway, I'll take another look, but I do think, you know, perhaps mixing up just the, what the road itself is made of or the color of the road might actually help that out a little bit.
We'll explore that.
Yep. And at some point in the future, I think it might be worth, you know, reapproaching Walmart about at some point in the future, probably not today, but at some point in the future. As far as the contingency amount, I assume the contingency is always set at that amount, and so if we go into the contingency, that it's billed to the tenants?
The way that this CAM agreement is structured, I don't, and I've asked the attorneys, I don't see any way to do special assessments, that's, which is a little scary.
You got your money, and that's what you got.
That's what we've got. So the contingency account, we like. Now, RTD...
So what if you don't use the contingency, then?
It just builds.
Okay.
And it builds for when we...
Can you answer that? Okay.
So how much is the annual contingency?
Need to look at that number. I believe it's $120,000 a year.
Okay, so we're a little low on the contingency right now, then?
A little low. I think there's about $300,000 in contingency right now in that account. Now, if we have a big snowstorm, that's where we go for it.
Yeah, wow, okay.
If we end up with some, well, the parking structure is, quite honestly, a mess. It's starting to fail, and we're going to have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in the, in the long term just to keep that garage going. It's starting to show...
You want an assessment on that?
I will ask the attorneys to look at that again, but I don't see it.
Okay. Boy, that'd be rare for a common area maintenance agreement to not be able to do a special assessment based on expenses incurred.
I agree with you. Most HOAs can do special assessments. I don't see it in the documents.
Okay, fair enough. That's, I guess, something we need to look at as well, that may have to be addressed. Lorette?
They have. They have done assessments. They've done it both for the parking lot, for the awnings. They've done it before, so...
I'll look into that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
I've talked to several of the businesses down there through the years, and they've been surprised by those. They've complained about them.
No.
And having happened, so I'm going to go with that they just weren't making up to be annoyed by it, so maybe there hasn't been any recently, but we've certainly done them in the past.
I think what you'll find in that, and I'll confirm it, is that Weingarten Realty will do special assessments to their tenants for things on or to the building. We don't touch buildings, so they may have...
Well, it might have been for that, so...
On their lease agreements.
Wouldn't have anything to do with awnings.
Whether we did that or they did, but, yeah. I would agree with the mayor that it would be pretty unheard of to have it at the camp.
I agree, and I'll look into that.
Thank you. Other comments from council? You know, it sounds like, you know, they are asking for some direction this evening about whether to continue on with the status quo, or whether we want to look at the financing option. Was that what the alternative was?
Go back up one slide, Dave.
Yeah, get us to our decision slide, will you? I'm trying to find it right now. So the options are to, you know, dissolve, including the, you know, paying off the COP, or designate another property as collateral, is what the alternatives the staff has given us. So, you know, status quo or one of those two options. I'd appreciate it if council would weigh in or continue on with questions. Linda?
I actually still have a question, I guess.
Go ahead.
I'm a little hesitant to ask it, because I don't want to start a fight, but, so, maybe this is for you, Eric. Is it really, how common is it for cities to decide to form a nonprofit like this in order to get out of having any environmental implications? And where, I think someone mentioned the Cherry Creek example, that, and a couple of others in the metro areas. It, I just, I think, it really irritates me that a city would not take obligations seriously and responsibility like that, but it was 1995.
Yeah, Lowry and Stapleton are your two other...
Yeah, and I think that's what people said before.
Regional examples. Kansas City has the Power and Light District.
But we have some level where we can't be sued, and we're more protected than a nonprofit, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I guess I have a values issue with it. But besides that, I think it doesn't make fiscal sense to do this yet, to get rid of it, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong. Somebody can convince me of that. It really bothers me how it began, though.
Can't do much about that, no.
I'm sorry, you're saying the formation itself, the decision to form the entity itself bothers you?
Yeah. To me, it doesn't show due diligence to represent the public and let them get mad and say, you know what, there's some environmental problems here that, you know, I don't know, just seems like shirking responsibility.
Thank you, council. Steve?
All right. When it comes to, should we swap land? Currently, I don't see any real advantage unless we have some way of, you know, something that we can swap land for, and then turn around and leave this building and rent it out, make some money on it, or, you know, whatever, whatever. That would be the only reason I could see us doing that. But until then, I think it's probably best that we fulfill the agreement, and we've got seven and a half years. And then, at that point in time, the city, I would recommend that the city be prepared to make some, you know, big decisions, and preferably make the decisions before the end of the agreement, so it can be a smooth transition if needed.
Thank you. You know, I guess I'll weigh in if others don't want to quite yet, but I generally agree that, you know, we can stick with the current status quo with this entity. You know, I think some of the concerns were some transparency, how we were going about our business. It sounds like a lot of those have been addressed to, I think, the general council's satisfaction. I see a transactional cost to designating, to the options of either designating another collateralized property or by paying off the loan, of course, and refinancing a new deal somewhere else, so there's a pretty big transactional cost there. You know, as far as the idea of, you know, why it was formed or whatnot, again, I guess the way I look at it is the community had a big problem, and somebody had to step up and take care of it, and the city, in my mind, was the most situated to do that. And, you know, the developers certainly wanted nothing to do with it, and the private marketplace didn't want to deal with this issue. And so I think the government, with its local governmental immunity, combined with this entity's status, was the best situated to deal with the big problem that our community was going to have. And ultimately, in my mind, led to a development that we can all be proud of decades, you know, at least decades sooner, I think, than it would have happened in the private market, because the cleanup costs alone were astronomical, I assume.
They were over $200,000.
And so I understand, I guess, from a basic sort of standpoint of, wow, how this could be beneficial to the community. Lorette?
And who paid the $2 million?
That came from, well, EEF was given the cash to do that, to demolish the mall.
That's the, that's the debt we incurred to do that. And while I'm not interested in justifying or not justifying why the decision was made, I do appreciate, I believe Mayor Jefferson was right in at least that the transparency of it, the honesty in being upfront about what it really is, and that it's an asset owned by the people, that we have the right to the transparency, and that you've started that process is admirable. I was very proud to have attended your first public meeting. I appreciated that you voted to start doing the RFP process so that we can take care of this, but to recognize that it's our stuff, it's our, it's our employees running it, and that the citizens have a right to know what's going on and to keep it as transparent and open as possible. So thanks. It's, I don't think there's really too much choice about that it's got to stay the way it was formed in order, until this obligation is taken care of. And I appreciate that the employees probably don't want to, but then you'll have to go back to the people who formed it and why they did that and put you in that position.
It does sound like, unless other members would like to weigh in here, it sounds like we generally have consensus to stick with the, the status quo, the entity, unless anybody objects. I'll suggest that we can move on to the second agenda item. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
And congratulations again.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Moving on to agenda item two, that's Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation. President Tom Brennan is here to discuss EMRF. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening first to give you some background on the Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation, and also to provide you with information on the current revenues the sites are generating from 16 through 19, and they are our current leases. The City of Inglewood purchased several properties in northwestern Douglas and southwestern Rappahoe County for the purpose of securing water rights and also to construct a reservoir. This was in 1948. The McClellan Reservoir was completed in 1965. This reservoir is one of the utility department's biggest assets. It allows us to manage our water portfolios. We take our water deliveries in. To give you a number, McClellan Reservoir, through our lease, facilities lease and water sales, generated 2.3 million in 2015 with sales to Centennial. In 19, what happened here? In 1999, through ordinance 41, Inglewood City Council established the McClellan Reservoir Foundation, and it was staffed by department directors. The foundation's purpose was twofold: to market the land to provide a long-term revenue stream for the city, and two, to protect the water quality of McClellan Reservoir. Also, through ordinance 41, council transferred the parcels of land that were not utilized for the reservoir to the McClellan Foundation for the purpose of developing these lands. Here on this list, here are the five current leases, and the very top one is a sale. I put that in just to show this is what got us starting. In December of 2007, RTD purchased the land. They were gonna do eminent domain to get it, so the city sold it to them. These five leases are what came out of it. Okay. These highlighted in blue are, that's a, these are MKS lease, Ben Franklin. That's the Shea. We have Ward and Miller. These areas right in here, here, and right there are gonna, they're water quality detention facilities that are not developable. In the upper right-hand corner, that right there is our deep well fields, and the parcels just to the left of there have no water and sewer, and we're thinking for development purposes. It might be like a trailhead for the High Line Canal. There are five parcels remaining that need to be addressed. It's these two just south of RTD. This one, this one, and that one. As I was saying, these, this is the estimated 2016 income for these five leases, and they're all staged. As you can see, Shea was the latest to come on. The miscellaneous expenses, 60% of that is legal fees for our real estate attorney. Approximately 20% is insurance, and 20% is professional services. The board is essentially all brand-new. I have the most seniority as, and I started in August of 2015. Now, all professional services are bid out. In 2016, we did not have to perform any weed cutting or fence repair. We had some graffiti mitigation and some signs. So those are the, the graffiti mitigation was done in-house. We have a caretaker down at McClellan Reservoir who's right there. He does the graffiti on our reservoir as well. It's 2017. As you can see, it, it escalates up. It's approximately eight and a half percent it's earning, so it'll gross $1.4 million in '17. In '18, it's $1.6. And '19, I believe that's almost $1.7. This does, this is only what is enforced today. I envision with the Shea lease, now that the hospital's down there, we've gotten about six inquiries in the last few months, so I think the area is, is ready. So, tonight, staff has two recommendations. First, we'd like to seek approval to obtain a commercial real estate broker to market the lands and negotiate the leases. Staff does not have the expertise in marketing and lease negotiations, and we feel to be in the best interest of the city that to have a professional group do it. This, the selected broker would be responsible for marketing the lands, negotiating the leases, and he would report directly to city council on all transactions. Second, the EMIRF board was formally requesting resolution of support to relieve its duties, requesting permission to dissolve the corporation and its board with all assets going back to the City of Inglewood. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Just, I, this was updated, right? And I'm, I'm clicking on it, but it updated the other one, but not this one. Is that weird? Like, this one you added, right? You added that PowerPoint today.
It still wasn't in there, I don't think.
It wasn't on mine.
I don't see it. It's, I don't see it in there.
Okay.
Is this last slide?
No, the whole set of slides, right?
Yeah, the presentation was not in our packet, but basically, a lot of the underlying information was in the packet. It just wasn't in a PowerPoint presentation.
This is different that went out on Thursday?
Yes.
Little bit different. I mean, most of the information is still there, but the PowerPoint itself was not there. Questions? I, I do have one, and that is the cost of, you know, would we need to redo some leases or? Because those payments, I assume, are made directly to the board, and I assume that we'd want those lease payments then, in the future, if we did dissolve, to go directly to the City of Inglewood. Do you have a cost, estimated cost of that?
Currently, right now, the payments do come into the city.
Oh, great.
They reconcile the cost, you know, for the attorney, insurance, and miscellaneous professional services. The remainder is transferred back to the general fund.
Okay, great. So the lease payments are currently made to the City of Inglewood directly, so there's no issue there with the lease terms?
The finance department currently handles that function.
They do the bookkeeping.
But not for EMIRF, for the city. So the check from the tenant is written to whom?
Goes to the Inglewood McClellan Foundation, but it is processed through the finance department.
Okay. And are we comfortable with that moving forward if we dissolve, or would we want to redo the leases, do you think? To suggest that the checks should be made out in the future to the City of Inglewood?
Yes. What, with these leases, we're allowed to reassign.
Okay, it's as simple as an assignment.
It would be a simple reassignment. The bigger task would be dissolving the foundation, and if we get concurrence tonight, the EMIRF attorneys are prepared to move forward to submit the proper paperwork and.
Excellent. Do we have a total cost estimate of the transaction itself, of dissolving the entity itself?
I do not have one.
Okay. Thank you. Rita? Okay, Rick? Sorry.
Thank you for, a couple of questions. We, we are, I know that we have talked in the past numerous times about where the money should go. We've still not had the discussion of how much should go back into, you know, the later fund, which funded a lot of the stuff here, and how much should go back to the city, so I hope that we can get that. And on the agenda, I know the, our past council was gonna discuss it, we just never did, but I definitely would like to make sure that, you know, we have discussion on the later and what happens here. At least, it, it just seems to have been in limbo for a long time. Second comment is, or question, however it is, is on the Realtor. Have, have we determined what we're willing to pay up to? Because I know commercial Realtors don't make as same percentages as residential, and I know that some will try to get 6% out of you, but they'll also do it for two, so.
We have not put out an RFP yet, as of today, but we will negotiate. That is a negotiable item, as you are correct.
Right.
Yeah, they will be all over the board, because we've seen that with our leases. When these come in, a lot of these businesses are represented by brokers, and their fees vary greatly.
Right. And when most commercials are at 1% or 2% for the whole deal, one each way, because it's a higher amount of money usually. But I just wondered if you guys had already decided which, you know, if there's a maximum you're gonna do.
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
And once the, you know, once those, the remaining parcels are brokered out, they will, we won't need their services.
Thank you. Rita?
Actually, my question, I should have asked mine first because it was the same as Rick's. Have we decided who it's gonna be? So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
For dissolving the foundation, where, what's the pro, what's the underlying reason for wanting to dissolve it? What's the pros and cons?
The, the premise for it is staff does not have the expertise nor the time to properly market and then negotiate leases. That is some of the fees we're paying Mike Miller. So, and to answer your question also, to offset those costs, that $60,000 miscellaneous would essentially go away, except for professional services, on the remaining parcels, which is mostly mowing and fence repair, so they're not big-ticket items.
Thank you. Lorette?
The staff hasn't had the expertise. I mean, they didn't in 1999, and they don't today. I mean, that's not your job. I mean, that wasn't your expertise then, whoever was in the position then and isn't now, but even if it came back to the city, we would still have to pay somebody as they are to do it, because if it came to the city, and then it would still be staff, just maybe different staff, but it would still end up being contracted out. So, I, I appreciate what you're saying, that you don't have the expertise to do that. I would like a little bit more of a legal advice before making this decision on exactly the pros and cons of setting this up and why they did it that way. I believe that they tried to do it under arms-length to try to protect the city and do these contracts a little separately like that. And so, a little bit more from the attorney on what the pros and cons would be about taking this out. And then, we would need to have a game plan of exactly who within the city would be doing this. How would we, we would contract this out, how, who would be taking over those pieces of it, because we would still end up with the same issues that we had before.
Thank you. You know, as far as the operations issue, perhaps Eric, you can address that, and Mr. Comer, perhaps you can address the legal pros and cons. Maybe I can start with you, Eric, with the, I assume you would be taking over operations and that those policy issues would be coming forward to council?
Yeah, that's accurate, Mayor. I don't, there's, I think Counselor Berantine raises a good point. From an operational standpoint, there wouldn't be much change in those who are overseeing the work as it stands today. Our accounting manager's still gonna be doing the accounting. The only difference would be Public Works would probably end up taking over maybe the responsibility in tandem with utilities for maintenance of those parcels, the fence repair and the mowing, as has been mentioned. The biggest issue, I think, is that since no one in the city is truly actively marketing the property, right now, there is passive marketing, I would say. It's not aggressive to get these other parcels leased up. Nobody on staff has that particular expertise, so that's the piece that would become the contract portion. And I think Counselor Gillett is exactly right on. We would need to be coming back to you and enunciating, here are some thresholds, counsel, that we would recommend and we would like to get, gain from you, what, what would be permissible and what would not, because in some instances, as has been mentioned, these tenants or the, or a broker would come with a tenant in tow wanting to be paid for bringing them here for the life of the lease, and those are some things that we would need to understand what those costs are, which would reduce potentially revenues coming in.
I, I guess what I would like to hear from the attorney that's been, you know, because we still have the same attorneys that formed EMIRF, and so they'll have a wealth of knowledge about why they did it, why they did it the way they did it, and maybe there needs to be some discussion about whether, if the city is gonna take this over, whether we should be in the landlord business or not, or whether we should look at potentially selling these, these parcels instead of leasing them, whether we want to make some different changes. So, since we have that wealth of knowledge from those attorneys that we've paid a lot of money to, then I would like to get that information so that we can make that decision, yeah.
That's where we're turning next. That's right, thank you. And yeah, Mr. Comer, I, I agree. If you, if you could address this issue, I, I think the idea of, you know, liability, you know, to the city from operations with the two alternatives of continuing to go through EMIRF and, and the idea of changing the policy to deal directly with the city on those type of lease and operations.
Well, if we keep it with EMIRF, EMIRF carries that liability. If EMIRF is dissolved, we take over that, that job of leasing this property or selling this property, maintaining the properties out there, then the city has some potential liability, but we also have the Governmental Immunity Act that we fall under. It would be treated like any other property that the city owns at this time. Even though it may be in a different jurisdiction, it's still our property, just like McClellan Reservoir is. So all of the legal concepts that attach to any of our water rights outside of the city or any of our structures outside of the city that deal with our water rights, for instance, as an example, they carry the same liabilities as everything else. So I'm, and it's.
We carry liability insurance on this, or would we have to buy a separate policy on this, or is this something that?
I think it would cover, I think it would be covered under SIRS.
SIRS, okay, that's what I was asking.
Just like everything else we have.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? I guess I'd like to jump in with my comments, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to the idea of dissolution, if that's the, the preference here. I, I do like the idea of working with a broker for transactions, particularly with the board turnover that we've had recently. I think that, you know, the decision by the previous board really was to try to do that work in-house. I was comfortable with that decision. I'm also comfortable with the recommendation of working with a professional moving forward. You know, as far as the discussion with later and whether or not these proceeds should be going back to later, I guess I'll turn to Eric on that one and just ask him to address that quickly. In the 2017 budget, all proceeds are going directly to the general fund, I assume, correct?
Actually, it's split. As you recall, the city did a, or EMIRF utilized $800,000 in this year's budget to actually help construct the road that facilitates access to MKS as well as the RTD parcel. So, a portion of that's being paid this year, $400,000, next year, $400,000 as well, back to the, to the later fund, and then the rest of those proceeds are, are going to the general fund.
Sure. I guess what I'm saying, though, is that those monies are being paid as a debt to later, but the policy currently, at least administratively, is that that money is going directly into the general fund, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Thank you. And I'm happy to sort of have that discussion amongst council. I, you know, given the current situation with the administration's decision to put it into the general fund, I think that's generally what we're balancing our budget on, and so I think if we decided to put it all back into later, that that would be a substantial change that would, I think, require us to look a little bit harder at the budget itself. I do like the idea of, of later budget, you know, or the later fund itself, growing over time and having a, a source of funds. But, you know, again, right now, in my mind, we're sort of living off that revenue and have been for some time. Linda?
I have just a question from the memo, just to clarify. So, on the, on the second to the last paragraph on the memo that went with this, it says the selected commercial broker will be responsible for marketing the available parcels and negotiating the leases for the available parcels, probably, right? Or the, those available, maybe, just as a clarification so that we.
Yes, there's five remaining parcels.
So maybe, maybe spell that out or something, but I wrote, when I was looking at this the other day, I thought, if, I, I'm in favor of doing this. It sounds like, I mean, the last thing I want to do is have people managing this who really don't feel like they're confident to manage it and have the expertise for it and are maybe strapped with other more important things, given what we hired them for. So I would be in favor of doing something with this. I do want us to develop a clear plan, though, with some success criteria of what is it, what does it look like for this over time? And part of that, I think, is the later conversation. I mean, the later fund was set up to give this long-term kind of perspective of assets for the city that the citizens would benefit from over time, not just a one-time thing, just, unless it was a one-time thing that actually created wealth over time again. I, I guess there's, you can always be up, that can be up for grabs to redefine that, but that was the original intent, from my understanding, and being on the Budget Advisory Committee and listening to, looking at past stuff, but I really, if we, if we do this, I would like for us to get a pretty clear plan of what we're expecting from this, with some criteria that we all would agree are, we can benchmark on some success, that, yep, that's what we're hoping for. And I'm fine with a commercial agent. I love that, you know, knowing that we could get 2% versus 7% is nice to hear.
Others want to weigh in? I'm sorry, Steve?
Oh, I should add one more. I, I agree with Counselor Berantine. I would like to hear some legal background from the, the attorneys that actually helped formulate this to say, what are the unintended possible consequences of doing this that we aren't aware of?
You would like that after tonight?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I think this is a big decision. It doesn't bother me to put it off for another time when we can get that input, but this is really helpful.
Sounds like a council request, Eric. Steve?
Okay. Getting a broker to handle the land transactions or to market it, I'm perfectly fine with that. That's something that has probably been needed for a while. When it comes to dissolving, dissolving, I'm, I have insufficient information in order to say yes or no. I, I'm on the fence. I don't know what is the best solution at. or no. I, I'm on the fence. I don't know what is the best solution at this point in time. So we probably need to discuss it and get some more information.
Thank you, sir. Do others feel the same way, or do others want to proceed with it? Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch the order over there on the right. It's probably Lorette?
I agree with, and I think that, just to reiterate what I said before, I think prior to us dissolving this, we need to know why exactly, what we're getting ourselves into legally, and what it's going to look like moving forward, so that we have clear direction, both for the money, because this anecdotal kind of, here's where we think it goes, and to my mind, it balances our budget. We need, we need to know exactly what's going on. How much is being spent, how much we're bringing in, how much it's costing them to maintain any properties, or do what they're doing out there, how much is actually coming into the general fund, and the vehicles that are going through there. It's not just, they're not just doing the accounting for it, it's coming through that organization, through another vehicle. And so we need to know the process, how it's working now, so that we're not getting ourselves out of the frying pan and into the fire, and not knowing. And I certainly don't want an interim process that'll just muddy the water. So if we can kind of really understand what we're doing, and what process we're going to, so that we have that clear direction Linda is looking for, I think that's appropriate. And I think that would take some additional information from the attorneys.
Yeah, sounds like a little expansion on that council request. Sorry, did I not get Amy? I think I need to go to Amy, and then back to Rita.
Yeah, I, I agree. A pro and con list would be helpful. Pros for, you know, keeping it, pros and cons for both. Why we would keep it, and why we should move. And I think what Councilmember Olson suggested, a kind of a, a plan for if we move off, what kind of steps we need to take, and how we're going to know it was a good decision, would be helpful. Because what I'm afraid of is, like a couple of the other council members mentioned, that we may, there may be consequences to this changeover that we aren't aware of yet. So I think the more kind of background we have, would be helpful to, to make that decision. And then we can kind of back into it, too, if we have a timeline, like, we want to convert it in a year, you know, what steps do we need to take to get us to that point, would be helpful.
Does everybody also want to have the later discussion as well, maybe weigh in on that as well, if you don't mind? You want to have that conversation soon as well? Amy?
I would like to, yeah. I think it's important. As we're, you know, kind of discussing this whole thing, we should include that as part of the discussion, definitely.
Thank you, ma'am. I think it was Rita, and then, and then Rick?
I actually just wanted to weigh in, too. I agree with what Councilmember Berentine, and Councilmember Olson, and, and Martinez, and actually Councilmember Yates, has kind of laid out. So, anyway, I'm for that. I think we do need to talk to the EMIRF attorneys to get more direction.
Thank you, ma'am. Rick?
Yeah, I echo, repeat, dodo, everybody else's comment. You know, I, I agree with Steve. I, I don't know what I don't know. And I'd prefer to make sure that we all ask the important questions. But I'd also like to state, you know, our EMIRF board has done an excellent job in the past. We, if you look at all the leases coming in, you know, for, for guys who didn't, that wasn't their, you know, forte, you know, they, they did a very good job, but they didn't make the decision on any of these leases, council did. So it did come to council, so we, this body still has the authority, and I'm assuming it will in the future, to still control and decide what we want to do. So, even though, you know, yes, the, and I, and I get that that's not, you know, the expertise. I want to say thank you for all the work that a lot of those men and women did in the past to get it to this point. And I, I'm really excited about the income that's going to be coming in. But, so yeah, I'm, and I'm in no rush on, on this. It's, the land's not going away tomorrow, or, you know, anything. But, but also, nor am I in a rush to, to say, it's got to go into the later fund, or the general fund. And I, and I agree, it probably would need to be a tiered step. If we're going to move a small, you know, move a percentage back into later, I wouldn't want it to obviously affect 2017. And, you know, hopefully by 2018, we can at least have a discussion.
That'd be fantastic. I, you know, I'm actually thinking, I'm hearing a consensus to reset another study session on this topic, after we've gotten an opportunity to get a council request that includes some success measures, as well as outlines of some of the transfers, you know, to and from the general fund and later. I, I do think that, you know, we could probably pick up the discussion at later, at the next one, if, you know, let's, let's include the discussion a little bit with later. I think if you include those transfer amounts, that'll be a conversation that we can start to begin to have. I don't think we need to, you know, end that conversation that night. But if that's something we'd like to discuss, we can have that information there, at that study session as well. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll suggest we move on to our fourth agenda item, really the third, but the fourth on the agenda, which is EMIRF easement discussion. Public Works Director Dave Henderson is present to discuss the EMIRF easement. Good evening. Welcome back.
Evening. CDOT's going to be adding a toll lane to C-470, and through the design of this, they realized that they need some drainage easements. They also saw the ponds that EMIRF already owns, and basically, they're, they're going to obtain easements to use those drainage facilities. For them to construct new ones, they would have to buy property, they would have to spend millions of dollars building these facilities. We have the capacity in our ponds to accept their drainage. So they have, they commissioned an appraisal, they brought it to us, they offered us, I believe it was 200 and, $231,400 for seven easements. Six of them are permanent, and one is temporary. None of these easements would encumber our properties, any of the developed properties. It won't affect how we develop EMIRF property. We countered their proposal, and I will give Kathleen the credit for this, because I had spoken with them on the phone, saying, you know, you want it, we have it, we're not happy with that number. They suggest we might get, you know, 8% or 10% more. We asked for 12, and they accepted it. So we got a lump sum offer of $260,000. Their only caveat was this, is that we proceed with all due diligence to get it approved. So, we are recommending that, that we, the city accept this, and actually will, with your concurrence, we'll bring forward a resolution at the next council meeting, for consideration.
Thank you. Council questions? Steve?
The 20% of that, that's, are they anticipating that's how much water capacity they're going to, to need? Or is it, where'd that 20% come from?
It's arbitrary. It, they are, what they're saying is, here's the value of the land, and we're going to purchase easements at a value of 20% of the fee value. I've seen that number vary over the years in appraisals. It's not always 20%. Sometimes it's 10. I think it is 20, because they realize constructing new facilities would just cost the taxpayers a lot of money.
So will it overtax our storage capabilities, or?
Not at all. Engineering studies have been done. We can handle their additional water from a lane out there with no problem.
Okay. You, Lorette?
That was from before.
No problem. Amy?
What happens when you're blind?
Use your good eye. Just kidding. You said it was 260?
Uh, 260 is the offer that they accepted.
Okay.
Our counter was 260.
Okay. Because I just see that noted in one place, and it just had a number, and it was scratched out, and it said 260. I didn't see it in the other places, so.
That's where it is. The paperwork, they've agreed to that, though. They scratched it out and did that themselves. And they'll be bringing us revised paperwork for a closing, which they hope to do within 30 days. And it will say 260,000.
Okay. And you said six of them were permanent, and one was temporary?
One's temporary. On the south side of C-470, they need to get into our property just for some grading, or, I'm not sure what. But anyway, but they, they need, and that reverts back to us as soon as the project is done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Rick?
What is the total square footage we're going to be provided?
I will have to look.
Or acreage, I can convert it to-
It's on here, isn't it? 2,000?
I don't know if it's 15 acres.
Permanent is 663.
See?
Oh, that's slow, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's probably about 12, no, probably about 14 acres, if I'm-
You would know.
Looking at it.
14 times.
Let's see.
Divided by...
I, I'm counting about 640,000 square feet. So what's 640,000 divided by 43,000?
Their paperwork says 663,000, 655.
Oh, great, it's right on there. Thank you.
At 226,3836, but then, of course, they changed the amount, so I don't know what-
Oh, there it is, right up the top paragraph.
On the last page. Or, I'm sorry, second to last.
Seems like it's, it's very inexpensive per square foot. Just trying to figure out why, even on an appraisal, even on easement, you can still get 50 cents a square. We're not even doing that.
Let's see. I haven't done that calculation. All I can say is that they value some of this property as high as $10.40 a square foot for fee, fee value. And they've taken 20% of that, is what they're giving us. So it should be, what is that? That's-
Couple dollars.
$2 a square foot?
609,000 square feet.
This says, actually, the number, 663,000, 655 square feet?
I'm basing that on, you said 14 acres.
Okay, yeah.
If I take 260,000-
It's 15 point something acres.
That's 30, 30 cents a square. I just, I'm just trying to figure out, the number just doesn't come up right, and I'm, that's why I'm-
Should be more than that.
Well, this is just, this is just pawn to begin with. And we-
Easement properties, easement properties, forever. You have it forever. You don't have to give it away.
Fair enough.
I'm just asking why it's not, even at 50 cents a square, it'd be a little over 300,000. I, I, I'm just asking. It just seems extremely low to me. But, and would it be worth, before we execute it, to have our own appraisal done?
Well, I, the appraisal that was done, we reviewed it. I did call a real estate appraiser, and ask them about it. And $10.40 a square foot on fee value, hard, hard to argue with that.
Take 6, yes, now we're getting though.
Yeah.
Take 609,000, just, just take 600,000 square foot times $10. That's-
I also want to mention-
Doesn't add up.
CDOT's process in this is, they are going to acquire this property. And-
They want to get it quick.
And they, yeah, they will, so their choice, they'd rather do it by agreement, but they will also use eminent domain. The appraisal we have is titled eminent domain taking. So the way it will work, if we don't approve this, is CDOT will deposit the lower amount, the 231,400 with a court. They'll take possession of the property, and then we'll fight about value in court.
I think that sounded like a council request, to break down the lease rate by square foot. Is that right, Rick?
Yeah, it's just not adding up.
Thank you. And that might be helpful, to add some clarity here. Whether we've got the square footage wrong, whether we've got the rate wrong, what's going on here? We can get that confusion cleared up a little bit, so that we know exactly what we're talking about, before this comes forward. Linda?
So I'd, I'd also like to, I mean, this was July 25th, right? That was the first-
Yes.
Memo. So something's transpired between then and now. And I'd, I'd love to know what the timeline required for them is on this. Like, when, how, I mean, do they need this done yesterday, or they're going to claim it tomorrow, whether we agree or not? Or-
You know, I don't know.
So I'd just like to get a little bit more information, and find out what's the timeline we have to work with. And, you know, so we know exactly, and our citizens know exactly how much money this is, per whatever agreeable amount is common for this. So, if it seems reasonable to you, then, and what we're coming up with isn't quite the same as what you thought it was, there's some kind of disconnect.
There is. I'll say that. I, I was looking at 20% of $10.40, that's nearly $2. Now some of the others are-
That was on their claim, right, that it was $10.40?
It's on the appraisal.
Yeah. But, but then that doesn't add up to the, but anyway, I'm sure we can get to, I'm, I'm just worried that we're gonna-
We'll answer those.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you. Amy, and then Lorette?
My question related to timeline as well, because it says here, under other conditions, that they've only entered in, entered into this agreement only because the grantee has the power of eminent domain. So I'm wondering, I guess you kind of answered it in Linda's question. You don't know when they want to kind of acquire this land for good?
I do know that they're telling me they need it now. That's what they tell me, as they've, they've let- They've let a contract. I think they've started. Yeah. Now, we are not the only property that they haven't closed on. There's a lot of them between I-25 and Kipling. They've got a long way to go, they're behind the curve. Guess that's how they operate.
And they're probably under the impression that we should just take whatever they can give us, because they're going to take it eventually.
Yeah, but they do, the appraisal, these appraisers that do eminent domain appraisals know, they can work for either side and come up with the same number. Because they don't want to go to court and get beat. They, they really, I know that, and I've seen them in the past, they do appraisal, whether it's for the owner, or whether it's for the taker, they'll get the same number.
Thank you.
But different appraisers have different opinions.
Lorette?
That's a lot more money than we got for the Douglas County stuff on the appraisal, and that's not even land you could build on, so this must be pretty good. You, Tom seems to be shaking his head. Did you have some additional information that you could add to this, on some of the questions about when they wanted to do it? Or did you have some additional information? Oh, okay, you were just trying to hear. I thought you were trying to, like, help them out, and go, no, no. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought maybe you had some addition, I thought you had some additional information. And Kathy, since you helped on some of this, are you able to answer any of those questions, since you were the catalyst to the additional money and got credit on that one? Thought maybe my- Oh, that was, yeah, yeah, accountants. I love that, just ask for more money. I thought maybe there was some additional that you could add to it. Thanks. I, I think we need to know how much the square footage is, so that we can have a formula that ends up to the amount that what we're talking about. But I, I don't think we're as far off as we think, so.
I hope not. You know, like I said, with the confusion in the room a little bit, I think we can clarify that through a council request as best, and we can deal with that issue a little bit later. Steve?
This property, can it ever be used for anything but water retention?
No, I don't believe it can. I think it would be too cost prohibitive to, first off, you need the facility. It's a regional facility. And you have to replace it.
Well, I know that we're using it for that application. So, if it was used for something else, we would have to do some underground storage, or something in order to-
Yeah, something-
Take care of it, or?
Yeah, I don't know what that would be. We also, I believe, and I would need Tom's help with this, but the metro district out there also, they, basically, they maintain the facilities for us.
Yeah, I, I think you're worth it.
Come on up, Tom.
Yeah. The previous board has been, started this, they bought, they joined the Highlands Ranch Metro District. And, as I stated earlier, one of the goals of the EMIRF Foundation was to protect the water quality. Well, the board in the metro district took it a step farther, and said, let's create regional detention facilities, that the metro district took over. Those two facilities are worth about, they've, metro district has about $2 million invested in them, and they serve, between the two of them, they serve all the parcels that Englewood owns down there. And the benefit of that is, it's, it's more developable land on that parcel. And two is, the entities like the regional facilities, instead of every site having an individual one. So these sites are dedicated water quality detention facilities. And as Davis stated, there's plenty of capacity. CDOT's urgency is, they would have to acquire land and build them. And that's why I think we're here today, is, that's why it's the eminent domain. They're there, they're regional, they're right in the, that highway bisects them. But I was not a part of that. I've just picked that up in the last year, through what I've read.
So it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it sounds like the application for that land is always going to be water retention, or detention, detention. You know, with that in mind, and what information that's came forward tonight, to me, it kind of sounds like this is, this is found money. I mean, we're doing it anyway, and the state's saying, hey, we'll- And the state's saying, hey, we'll give you, you know, a quarter of a million dollars if you'll let us use the same thing you're using right now. Unless something comes back totally different from a Realtor or from the appraisal or, or whatever. Currently, I don't see this as a bad, a bad situation. I, I think it sounds pretty nice, actually.
Welcome, Mr. Power. Let's see. Others with questions or comments? Mr. Power?
I was just gonna make a brief comment. I, I don't think this is a traditional highest and best use, value calculation here because of what they just said in terms of the use of the property. So they're not marketable to a private use, so that's the difference in the value. Just wanted to make that crystal clear.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
And I did notice on the appraisal that they've given us here, they're valuing the ponds at seventy-five cents a square foot. That's why it's gone down so much. The ten forties, when you're going through developed property, and the majority of the square footage is that.
Even at seventy, that's, that's fee simple at seventy-five.
Fee simple at seventy-five.
And how much, what percentage of that?
Eight percent.
Twenty percent. So that means they'd be giving us, you know, fifteen cents or somewhere in that range per square on the ones through the water, right?
Correct.
So I think that's the valuation issue that we were trying to identify earlier in this conversation. I appreciate that, yeah, I think it needs to be in a, in a one pager for us kind of thing.
Get it laid out, so it's really clear to everybody.
You know, I generally agree with Mr. Yates's comments that, you know, this is something that we're already doing. It's nice to have this money, and I agree that this is a long term, you know, probably going to be for water retention. I guess I disagree that it's always and forever, you know what I mean? That's a long time, and, you know, we don't know exactly what the future holds. And so, you know, how much, how much flow do they have? And is that something that could be boxed in the future if this thing were relocated? Is that physically possible? I know it's cost prohibitive. Obviously, and that's why it's not happening today.
The entire site would have to be a tank underneath, so it'd be, imagine this site with a tank underneath the entire site.
Huge pool tank underground, that's what it would have to be.
Another thing that I failed to mention was, the, the board, prior to the new board, the old board was working with the metro district. They were going to take over these lands, because they are undevelopable. That way, they're already currently, they did the initial investment, and there's several large diameter conduits across under four seventy. There's a fifty-four and a forty-eight. So to do away with these facilities, you'd have to redirect that water also. So I do not.
It's, it's a big endeavor, and like I said, I just, you know, forever's a long time, again, that's, that's my only comment.
Right.
Rita?
You know, just looking at this, the lion's share of the land is at fifteen and a half cents a square foot. Because PE-two is four hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight square feet, which is at that. And PE-six A is a hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. So the lion's share of all of it is at fifteen cents. So that probably is in the ballpark without even doing a council request.
Agreed. You know, it sounds like there's enough issue there, well, I'm sort of gonna, I think that still makes sense for us to spell it out for us in our, in our next conversation. Further comments or questions for staff on this issue? Go ahead, Lorette.
Can't we, since, the timeline on it again, how fast does this need to be done?
They're telling me right away, but I don't have anything to base that on, other than that's what they're telling.
And this is something council has to vote on?
Yes, council will have to, we, we will bring a resolution of support when, when you guys are ready for us to bring it. We were hoping to bring it next Monday night.
So when you do that, will you have the formula for how, how it breaks down so that we understand?
Sure, I can bring it there.
I don't think it should be delayed for that, I mean, I don't think we're going for another studies.
I agree, I agree. It's gonna come forward when it's ready, it sounds like. It's gonna come forward when it's ready, I think, council, whether it's next Monday or the, you know, the next regular meeting after that. So be, be aware that we'll be getting some supplemental information, and we'll be asked to make a decision on this issue. Further comments or questions before we move on? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen. I would like to take a five-minute recess, and we can pick back up on the last agenda item here before choice.
Insert that on the money if I could, I think.
Get it a little longer.
Take the money and run.
I have so much trouble.
Fair enough, I got you.
Eric wanted to go this weekend.
That was awesome.
Was it awesome? I had to orient students.
Hundred and forty volunteers.
Yeah.
Eight homes. It was really cool.
Will you give us an update?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I worked at four thousand Tacoma, which was fun.
What'd you do there?
Um, scraped and painted a retaining wall.
Describe that as fun, I'm impressed by that.
Ripped out, jackhammered sidewalk, replaced sidewalk, scraped and painted some trim on the house, cleaned up the entire backyard, cut a couple trees down. Although the guys that cut the tree down, the guys cut a tree down.
Come on, we're ready, come on. Thirty seconds.
Box, so I had to call Excel.
Oh, no.
But it was good. He was like, he was happy, he was like, happy, I'll take it.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, it was. It was a long day.
I bet.
I see that.
It took us every bit of, it took us every bit of time.
Boy, student!
That's great. I felt bad, I mean, we, our, my orientation for students was set in May, so I. Couldn't get out of it.
Yeah.
It was fun last year when we did the painting and stuff, that was really, really fun.
Touching, yeah.
Yeah, I hope it's something we do again, like every year.
Be nice just to pick a day and just say always this day.
Yeah.
We're the, we're the hundred and forty from, uh.
Okay, are we recording? We're recording. All right, guys, I'd like to get this meeting called back to order here. Thank you, let's move on to agenda item five, that is the budget discussion. We've got a follow-up on the 2017 budget workshop, I think that's Eric, is that right?
Yes, actually.
Mayor and council, this particular item is a follow-up obviously to our work, I'm sorry?
No, no, I was finishing saying, I was just letting Dugan know that you added, added the Sursa request.
Yeah, thank you.
In there, and that certainly all of us are comfortable anytime staff says, I don't know.
Let me get back with him.
To be clear, so that, so that we're not putting somebody in an awkward position, and then later expecting that they said something that they didn't really say.
Yeah.
Fair enough, I, I heard Sursa was gonna cover us, so I appreciate that clarity, and I did put it in as a council request from you, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll obtain that answer, council.
Thank you, go ahead, Eric.
Thanks. So this is a follow-up to your budget workshop that we had a couple weeks back now. And, and so we prepared answers to all the council request questions that were brought forward, and you should have those appended to this particular memo on the budget follow-up. But again, to provide that information that was requested, the FTE equivalency, questions whether or not the attorney's numbers were accurate, as well as just some questions relating to how the budget was put together. So that information's before you this evening. And we also wanted to reschedule this, this time, or schedule this time with you to cover the two items that are in the legislative budget that were brought up on, on the evening of the initial workshop. Those were the contribution to the MOA through aid to other agencies, and then public assistance funds, which are the twenty thousand dollars of monies that have been budgeted, again, for not, not-for-profits. And so we would like to get some direction from you, council, this evening on, on those issues or any other questions that still remain outstanding. I believe that Kathleen, sorry, mayor, Kathleen Rinkel has prepared a spreadsheet of the, specifically of the legislative budgets. You can see one year to the next, what changes are present, as well as some of the numbers that are contained within that budget. And that was separate from your budget book, because those budget books are pretty tough to, to look at and glean information from. We're gonna be changing the format of those in the future years. This is the last year that you'll have a budget book like this. We're primarily gonna be moving to more of a, more informational booklet that contains some of the party-based budgeting information, as well as just some other information that'll be more germane to folks and easier to read.
How about just a chip that goes in the head?
Yeah, can we make it more like a hologram?
Download it into the system, it's a selling Matrix-esque.
With full understanding.
Question on the memorandum here on A and B. It describes the twenty thousand to nonprofits working within the community as council aides. And under B, it describes the ninety-six thousand dollar contribution to MOA as aid to other agencies? And I guess I just, is that how they're?
That's the way it's, yeah, those are the exact line item.
Okay, and I, we always, or I've always used the term aid to other agencies, meaning that twenty thousand dollar piece. And so, but prior, this wasn't aid, this was a contractual obligation, was my understanding.
Correct, and that's just the way that the current chart of accounts has the, the amounts designated to. But you're exactly right, it was contractual between the city and the MOA, up to a half million dollars. However, that's continued since, oh geez, it would have been two thousand and six that you would have already met that obligation.
Thank you. I guess let's start with the information being provided from staff. Do those answer council's questions? Do we have additional questions? Do we want additional comment on any of those first six issues that were kind of rehashed from our previous discussion regarding city attorney's office, employee counts, water and sewer, housing authority? Lorette?
So the, the one concern was the FTS, and we need to make sure that we're not giving a false impression with that. And that was my concern, is when you sit there and say that the personnel has gone down to four hundred and nine, and when you add that information up in 2017, we're not going down, we're going up to four hundred and eighty-eight. That's, that's an increase, not, not, not even a decrease. So we've got to be very careful about, given that impression when, when, when that's inaccurate, because then it just makes us look disingenuous. So it's going from four hundred and fifty-seven, that you'd said before, and the numbers, when I added that up and I could see was around four eighty-eight for 2017. The, the city attorney's budget that, because those numbers just, they didn't match at all. And I know you've been moaned that you're not good at numbers, but this, this, I think, shows a little bit more accurately. I mean, in person all alone, there's a, it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money. And what it looked like, and I might have been wrong about this, but it looked like when the budget was done, that the deputy city attorney's position garnered another thirty or forty thousand dollar increase.
Sorry, is that Kathleen?
I can speak to that, Councilwoman Berentine. We took a look at the detail again, based on the, the questions that came up at the council meeting. What we did find was that the deputy city attorney salary had been put into the worksheets based on what Dugan was currently making as acting, rather than his previous as the deputy. And so it magnified the amount, the actual amount that should be there, and the spreadsheet has been corrected to, to fit into the budget.
So that's not reflected in this book that we have here then?
No, the, no, not in, not in that one.
That's not.
Because that's preliminary, it will be in the final.
Okay, so is it reflecting the hundred and three that he was making, that that position was making in November of last year? Or the hundred and seventeen, which was the money that was being paid to, as an acting?
It was reflecting the one seventeen plus benefits.
Okay.
So that, that's what came to the one forty-one eight. When we took a look at it and we backed it to the original number.
Which was the one oh three?
Right.
Uh-huh.
And with a little bit of an increase, it's one forty-three eight, which is just about a two thousand dollar variance. So it puts the variance at one point three percent, not at twelve percent.
Okay, and what's the ending salary number for the deputy city attorney?
That was the deputy city attorney at one forty-three eight ten. That's with benefits.
Uh-huh, without benefits, just a straight salary?
Oh, I didn't bring that number, I apologize. I, I can provide that, but I didn't bring it with me.
Right, when we're taking substantial things like a hundred thousand dollar bump here, and, and not in kind of fixing this anecdotally, and it's not even being reflected here, then, benefits to benefits, as long as we're talking apples to apples or oranges to oranges, then give me the number. to oranges, then give me the number what he was making with benefits, or, I shouldn't say he, the position, I'm sorry, the deputy city attorney was making with benefits, so that we're not talking salary on one end and then salary benefits on the other.
Okay, it's, the, with the salary and benefits, what he was making is one forty-one eight.
Okay.
With the increase in moving to two thousand seventeen, it's one forty-three eight, so it's about a two thousand dollar, one, one-nine-five-oh difference.
Okay.
An increase.
And, and that'll be reflected, that'll be changed in?
Yes, yes ma'am.
In here.
Other questions or comments? Rita?
Um, I have a question on the same one, where it shows the, um, the city attorney's salary, and actually, um, on the memo, this hasn't been updated either, the one that was on the agenda for tonight?
No, that one was not updated. I, I pulled these figures because we put them in just yesterday.
Okay.
To double-check.
Okay, um, the city attorney's salary, um, was, salary and benefits, two thousand eight-three-eleven, um, it shows a twelve percent increase? Is that correct?
No, we put that original budget sheet together before we had the actual, uh, new city attorney's salary that was negotiated. When we put the new city attorney's salary that was negotiated plus benefits in, it's two oh-two-nine-forty-one, which is a decrease of about six thousand dollars.
Okay, and did, were, did the benefits package go up at all, or just base salaries to employees?
For the whole employees? No, we just did the, uh, the base salaries. We've got the medical benefits that went up five percent in general.
Okay, so, on that two thousand dollar increase, does that include the medical benefits and the other benefits, but it also includes salary?
Mm-hmm.
And what did salary, what did the salary go up, two percent, I mean, percentage-wise?
For the salary, in general, across the city, it was three percent.
Okay.
Is what we built in. We, in your smaller groups, you do something a little bit differently, and so I can bring you those details, I don't have them here.
Okay, do you know what the details are for, like, um, the deputy city attorney?
Not here, I do have them, though.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll provide those.
All right, that'd be great.
Other questions or comments? Can I go back to Lorette? You want to go back?
Um, the, um...
Yeah, any of the first six is, I think is fair game at this point, in that memorandum, the follow-up conversations from our previous conversation.
One of them was the...
The total employee count, city attorney office, fund balance, water, sewer.
Okay.
And housing, the three.
That's from it, so it does seem, um, it does seem that I had some, the accurate information, that they do have a, a, a huge reserve fund, and it is the same people that run the plant for Littleton as it does for Inglewood, and it's a little embarrassing for them not to have known that. It's the same people that run the plant for Littleton, it's not a different staff. So if they've got twenty-seven, going to be soon twenty-eight million dollars in their reserve, and we're sitting on a Puni one point eight, and there are issues going on, we need to, we need to all be aware of what, of that, and certainly the people that are running the plant, um, need to know that information, because they should know both sides of it, because they're running both sides of it. Now, the unfortunate part is that the Littleton part doesn't have the, um, board, but, um, I'm not sure that helped us out too much either on knowing that, so, um, as we're moving forward, when we go to the Bi-Cities meeting, this is important, as we're dealing with our partner on this, on, uh, what we go forward with and what we don't, and how they have, with the same asset, um, seem to have amassed that kind of money, and how they did it, and what's going on, so that we're all knowing what we're doing with our partners here, so I appreciate that information, that was the other thing.
Thank you, yep, Eric?
I do, um, in talking to Mark Ralph, who's the Acting City Manager, as well as their, um, Finance Director, they have a different formula than the city of Inglewood has. Their sewer fund also covers their distribution lines, their collect, collection lines, as well as what they provide to the plant. They have significantly more collector lines than we have, and so that fund, that twenty-six million is to cover both improvements at the plant, as well as their collector system, according to their staff. And, our philosophy under our previous Utilities Director, Stu Fonda, was not to do increases until you needed the money. I kind of disagree with that, uh, inasmuch that, when we know that we're going to have some permit requirements, and we're going to see eight, nine, ten million dollars worth of improvements that are needed, we should be collecting a little bit each year. I know it's painful for residents to say, "Hey, I've seen my sewer portion of my bill go up two percent each year," but I would rather do two percent than just do a ten percent increase on folks and people really freak out.
It's set up like that now to go up incrementally.
Yeah, but not as much as it could.
Well, but I just want to correct you.
Yeah.
It is set up to go incrementally.
It is, but...
And we all agreed to it here.
Yeah, however, if you look at, if you look at the past years...
And we disagreed about it, thinking it was too much, and why do we need to do this if we don't need it?
I'm not criticizing anybody, ma'am, I'm just saying that it's better to have that incremental increase each year.
I agree, but I mean, I just think it's a different council.
All right, let's stick with Eric and I'll come over to you.
I just, yeah...
So, again, I, definitely, it is kind of disconcerting when you look at the disparate numbers, the twenty-six million versus the one point eight, but it's really not apples to apples inasmuch that, you know, our, our collector system is, you know, routinely budgeted for in, in our budget. The other thing is that since we're the host city for these plants, most of the lines that come into the plant from our partners, whether that be Littleton or some of the other metro districts, they actually pay for, uh, maintenance of their lines until the, until it comes to the, to the outside of our fence, and so, they have to work on their siphons and things like that, so, that is part of that explanation to a certain extent, and so, Dennis Stowe wouldn't know necessarily unless he was having conversations with the Public Works Director in, in Littleton to understand exactly what they had in their, in their reserves.
Um, I, I think what I'm asking for, Mark Ralph was, um, uh, kind enough to have addressed a group in Littleton that I was able to attend, and I greatly appreciate that. I, I think that it would be better if we had a little bit more information of how they're doing, Dennis, uh, Dennis Stowe works with the super group that goes in there, he does work with the Public Works Director over there, because he's part of the super group for that comes over, and that's who handles the stuff over there, and that's also their tap fees and some ways that they've handled some other issues, that I think anecdotally is probably unfair for you to just go ahead and give a thirty-second rendition of why you think that difference is there. This is a significant amount of money, and, uh, maybe we should look at some of the ways that they've handled some things, including the tap fees, including what they're doing for their rates, which, quite honestly, they've also, and almost legislatively, had to battle the fact that they want the, um, people who've paid for the infrastructure in the city, and that the growth pays for growth, that, to charge more money for out there, and I know Stu had some differences on some of that, but that we explore some of this, and a little bit more in, in-depth to see where the disparity, disparity is, where, what we're doing, what they're doing, and, um, how we're partnering with this. And if Mr. Stowe's not getting any information from the Public Works Director when he sits on that Super Four group, um, maybe he should, we should, uh, examine the communication a little bit better.
Thank you, ma'am, Linda?
So, I didn't, I didn't mean to be attacking you in any way, Eric, I just don't want it to be said that we have not been raising, because we have, and, and I do think there's a different tolerance level in Inglewood for raising anything. Um, I think, I would love to see the Water and Sewer Board involved in this, I hope that they've been, I also wondered if they've been kept abreast on the whole, um, water issue that we've been having over that area, do they, that's another issue, I guess you make that a council request, are they up to speed on the sludge issue too, as a committee, I hope? Okay, because I've heard some things from them, it seems like they didn't know exactly what was happening with us, as a council with that. But anyway, back to this, I do think that we could have gone up quite a bit more. Um, the council that approved the last ones, you know, wasn't really, I, I mean, I think we were all really careful about raising on anybody for anything, so, if we want to have a change in that, I think it's really important for us to get, rather than just say, "Well, in the past, they didn't want to increase it," we need to really look at what the implications are for us as a city, and what we can tolerate in the public for that. There's a perception that we make money on people on this, it's just a very common perception in the city, that we're making bootle, you know, uco, bootle, no, what is it?
Bootles.
Uco bucks.
Bootles.
In reality, it looks like Littleton is, um, and I would very much favor the request to say, like, okay, let's, let's lay out why their amount is so much bigger than ours, what exactly goes into that, because that looks awful in comparison to what we've been doing. Um, so, I think some of the things that you mentioned are much more substantive than the past, we didn't want to raise it, um, as actually, what is actually in that figure, so I'd appreciate us having that, and, and I don't know, I mean, they don't have to do it the way we do it, we don't have to do it the way they do, we can have apples and oranges, but let's just make sure when we compare them, we know it's apples to oranges. So, anyway.
Thank you, Linda, to your point, I think it might be helpful to do another council request to say, um, what was the last fee, how many years was it spread over?
We just did it, like, recently, I think, didn't we?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember, and I feel like I'm a little fuzzy on the details on that, and so, it might be helpful, yeah, I know we spread it out over several years, uh, so it might be helpful to look at, when was the last increase, how many years was it spread over, that kind of information might be helpful for us as well.
I might be thinking of water stuff though, too, so, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I remember, I remember we did one around the recession, you know, around nine, ten, and we, I think we did it for a four-year period.
Eric, you were on at the time, do you remember?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember, God, we talked about so many things.
I mean, we went through so many charts and percentages and what it would look for...
We'll get a council request on it.
Different perspectives of salaries that are going into households and stuff, it was very painstaking, and very conscientious to the payer, but...
The environment was a little different, you know, like I said, I think we were all very conscious of...
But you don't want to amass that kind of money in Littleton without having done it over time either, so they're doing something different.
Good point.
Could we request, could I request that the amounts, I think we're making huge assumptions that somehow they're paying a lot more in Littleton than we are here, and I'm not sure that that's a correct assumption.
Right, it sounds like we'd like to know what the rates are in Littleton, you know?
Yes, um, because, just assuming that they charge, what, ten times what we do, or something, to amass that kind of money, I think is, um...
We'll get the information.
Erroneous, so, just add that too, and they don't, they don't get our water, so, they do Denver water, so...
Right, and they could be going for it.
Oh, they are, they're fighting that too, interesting.
Move on to Steve.
Is there, the question would be, is there any reason why other jurisdictions, other than Littleton and Inglewood, couldn't be charged, you know, a little bit more to help cover some of these costs? Because it's in their best interest to make sure that, uh, this plant is up to snuff, and we're providing the infrastructure, we're providing the land, we're providing the management, we're providing all of that, that these other communities are not having to do. Um, so I don't see it as being unfair to have a little bit of an increase for, you know, the centennial members and stuff. I know that my brother and I have property at, at Quebec and Arapou Road, and it's Inglewood Sewer. So, there's, you know, so I think that might be one way we would want to look at, uh, covering some of our costs in the future and building that fund up, and potentially on the water end side, um, maybe we should look at that also.
Yeah, maybe we need a little bit of information about how common it is to charge a different rate, and, uh, perhaps what, and maybe that Littleton rate information might be able to be helpful as well. Our own rate information is probably, uh, would be a good idea as well. Sorry, keep adding on your request tonight.
Four pages later?
Yeah. Um, anything else, Steve? Um, back to Lorette?
If, if we could just check before, as well, um, I think Littleton still did it, but the, what put a monkey wrench in this whole thing was the Thailand's Ranch, I believe, and it might have been, uh, with, um, Strosh Ranch, whatever, the new one that they're trying to get the water for, um, was saying that they were being raised without representation, that, because they didn't have that representation in there. I think that they, I think Littleton won that argument, um, but, that was the argument that they were basing it off of, is that their rates were being raised, and that they shouldn't be different than what Inglewood or Littleton was doing, because they had no representation, and trying to put together a board and give them representation wouldn't be in our best interest either. But if you check and see what the end result of that is, was...
Mark Ralph, you're talking about?
Yeah.
I'd just be interested to remember how that turned out, or whether it got left open and never got resolved, whether they just dropped it.
Thank you. Further comments or questions regarding those first six issues? Um, seeing none, I'd like to move on to, uh, the two budget, uh, issues that the council requested have further discussion on, and that is aid to other agencies, and, what was the other one? Council aides, thank you. So I'll open up, uh, for comments regarding those. I, you know, I know the council, you know, wanted to have sort of a discussion about, um, um, aid to the twenty thousand that's given to nonprofits in the community, I, you know, historically, I'd say that, you know, the rationale given is that, you know, we don't do a lot of social programs, and that this is our, um, you know, efforts to, um, support local nonprofits who, who do this type of social work in our community. Um, obviously, one of the biggest benefactors, I think, is, um, Interfaith, uh, who does a lot of good stuff in our community. Um, you know, the variance of different sizes and, and missions of all these organizations are all over the board, um, some could survive without the funding, actually, I would say most could survive without the funding, but some may not be able to, there are some very small organizations. Um, what's council's pleasure, perhaps, on this one? Uh, we do have a comment, Rita, uh, we'll go to Rita, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Um, actually, I do, um, I feel for these agencies, the trouble that I have is that seven of us are sitting here making decisions with our taxpayers' money, and the truth is, um, we give to a lot of charitable organizations, my husband and I do, and people come to us for money, and so it makes it a little bit more difficult than going to a city, but a city is a government organization, and I don't feel we should be taxing the people to give their money away. I think we should let the people give their own money away, and, um, so, I would like to, um, probably take it out totally.
Thank you, Amy?
Am I missing, was there a line item of where, who got...
I don't think that was included, unfortunately, I apologize.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
I have that, if, if you want it, I do have that.
It would be helpful. And, and do we know, has it been typically that same amount over many years, or just various years?
They varied, every year, the council had, had a process whereby we went through each one, where they filled out an application, uh, we were able to see what we funded them at last year, the previous years, and council was able relatively quickly at a study session to come up with consensus on how much we'd give each entity for formal approval, um, so that's kind of been the process in years past.
I can tell you it's gone down, it was a hundred thousand, it was over a hundred thousand dollars before I was on council, before it went down.
Wow.
It, it went down to sixty, I think, at some point, when I was on, and now it's down, now it's down to the twenty, but it was, it was a huge amount at one time, very significant amount at one time, and got brought down.
Sorry, I wasn't sure if Linda or Steve was first here.
When it comes to, uh, charity going to private organizations, um, this is going to sound a little harsh, but I agree with Rita from the standpoint that government is here to help all of our community, and when we are giving money out to specific organizations, we're favoring one over the other, um, and it also makes organizations dependent upon government, and you lose your autonomy, maybe not directly, but indirectly, you lose your autonomy to perform your services the way that you see fit. Uh, I think one of the biggest problems we have right now in our nation is, is churches are, are taking money from the feds, and, and the feds are dictating what they will or will not do, not directly, but indirectly, uh, and I think that really hinders an organization to stick to their, their goals and, and what they want to accomplish, because whoever you get the money from is the person that you serve. Um, so in this situation, I feel for the groups, but I wouldn't have huge problems in saying, "You should look for those donations from other avenues other than government."
Thank you, sir. Move on to Linda, then Lorette, then Amy.
Uh, it is such an insignificant amount of money, um, that I doubt that I could ever say that any of theirs are dependent upon us, except perhaps maybe some of the little ones like Santa's, whatever, if we still do them, I don't remember if we do...
Yeah, I think we gave them a hundred and fifty?
Two hundred or something, but, um, here's my take on it, we are not a, a city with... Here's my take on it. We are not a city with social serviceability. Many cities are. There's health and human services and all kinds of things that help the most marginalized communities, those who fall at the lowest end of the economic area, and those who have extreme mental health issues, that, that we serve through this. There's no way that we make a huge dent, but I think what it says to these organizations that are serving in our city, we value you here. We care about what you're doing and the ways that you're serving our citizens in ways that we simply cannot. Giving, you know, Family Tree, 2,500, I think at one point we were giving them 10,000, we're giving them much less. They don't depend on us. It's really a partnership to say, thank you. The Women's Shelter for the battered women, it's just a partnership agreement in some ways to say, thank you for working with our, with people here. I've always had difficulty with the churches, only in that I think that we have so many churches doing the food banks, that that's where it makes me a little nervous. I think federal government can't really give money unless they segment it out. So I don't think we have to worry about that too much. But I, I really do believe that it's come from 40,000 when I think Rick and I first came on, maybe it was around there. It, it does not, I think it's an important part of our caring for our citizens in a way that we really can't through our budget. I also think that it helps, I mean, I, not helps, but I think it's important to know that we as a council do have to go through these and evaluate. And it's an interesting process of thinking about, wow, who's serving our community in ways that we could never serve. And I think we've gone through, since I first started on, which is sort of like who liked a group or not to actually, I mean, I pushed for a criteria set that we go through, and not everybody likes that still. But I think it's really important to force us into seeing who's doing what in our community, how they're handling it, how their finances are coming together, where it comes from. Some of these organizations are bringing in big dollars from all over to care for our citizens. And so our little 200, 300, $1,000, that chips into it is just saying, thank you, and saying, we want to be a part of it and celebrate you here and thank you for doing this. So that's the reason why I do it now. When I first came on, I thought it was weird. And then when I started to really think it through and looked at other cities and what they're doing, they're doing a lot more, some of them, a lot, lot more, not just Denver, smaller communities around us. So I would prefer that we keep it and go through the exercise of figuring out who's doing what in our community and caring for those that are most marginalized.
Thank you. Amy? Oh, Rick, and then Amy. I agreed, I agreed on that order before I, sorry.
You know, I was like Linda when we first came on, I'm like, you know, why are we doing this? But, and I, I hear and understand totally about people partnering with us in the community. This is one that I've brought up numerous times in my, my meetings. And overwhelmingly, they're like, why do we do this? And I, you know, explain the city's position and what my position is. You know, the, the, the warm and fuzzy, fluffy, you know, gentle guy inside me goes, ah, let's do this. But the pragmatist, the conservative, the, you know, keep government out of stuff, says, you know, we shouldn't be involved in this. And, and I felt, I've always felt like we're picking winners and losers, and we're trying to pick who gets and who doesn't. And I've never liked doing it. We've done it. But I would, I would prefer that we stop this process personally. So that's all I have to say. And I know that some may depend on it, but I think for the most case, most of them won't. So, sorry.
Thank you, sir. Amy?
I agree with a lot of what's been said tonight. I really like what council member Olson said about some, if we're going to keep doing this, decide some kind of criteria in which we decide who gets what money. And I don't know if there's a way, since we've implemented this priority-based budgeting, if there's elements of that that we could kind of apply to this, if there's other parts of, you know, our city that we don't actually provide the services, and some of these could fill the gaps, maybe that's another way to look at it. 20,000 is a lot of money, but I think, you know, in the big picture, it's a small amount. But I, I agree with council member Olson, a lot of these are services that we don't provide and that our citizens do need, how we go about partnering. I don't know if, if this is the right way or not, but I think it's worth reevaluating who's on this list and, and what dollar amounts.
Thank you. Steve?
You know, I, I just said I think it should go, but, you know, there is that squishy side. Squishy, gushy, whatever you want to call it.
Human, whatever.
I'll, I'll take that one. There are folks in here that actually do give back to our community. Brothers Redevelopment, they do quite a bit in our community. The, where is the battered women's?
House of Hope.
In the middle of the city.
House of Hope.
Family Tree.
And that is, that is one of those things that, it happens everywhere, that type of abuse. And if we have a way of helping those individuals, we can actually save the city some expenses from enforcement and, and everything by getting them out of those homes. I think, I can't say absolutely 100% at this moment that I'd want to remove all of it. But I think we do need to take a closer look at some of these and determine, do they, do these folks give back to our community? Is this something that actually helps us keep our budget down by throwing a little extra towards that? It's a tough one for me to say total yes, total no. I mean, there's, there's that big gray area in here.
Fair enough. Rick?
Oh, sorry, that was from before.
Oh, no problem. I'll go ahead and comment then.
I went and, and shook it and everything.
Oh, Lorette, I'm sorry. I know, she even shook it at me. I'm sorry. I am a little exhausted and I apologize. I'm not operating at 100% efficiency. Lorette?
Yeah, I think all of the organizations are worthwhile and they provide some service. Not, I mean, and think in the years past, we've gotten breakdowns of how many people in Inglewood they serve, and it's never going to be.
Part of the application.
It's never going to be 100%. But the, there's a lot of things that our citizens need, and the city is not responsible, nor should it be in the business of providing all of them. Health and human services is done through the federal government and then through the county, the state and the county. It's the county's job, and I don't want to keep duplicating some of these kind of services. To say that we are shoring up things that the city doesn't provide, the city isn't supposed to be providing that. We're supposed to function and make sure that we're prioritizing what we're supposed to be doing. And sometimes we're falling short on that piece. So to get involved in some of these things is probably not always a wise idea. The reason that people have a problem with this is because we are picking and choosing amongst nonprofits. What we decide is then worthy and not worthy. And the community has a different opinion on sometimes what's worthy and what's not worthy. And when we're making those decisions and we're the ones being thanked on the behalf of the citizens, that somehow the city then is sanctioning that as a better organization than another one, puts us in an awkward position. And we are using people's money, taxpayer money, and making decisions with nonprofits to do things that maybe not everybody agrees with or doesn't think is the priority. And I think that we need to focus on what we're supposed to be doing. There will always be some service that people in our community need that the city doesn't do. By design, the city doesn't do it. That's why we have the federal government, and that's why we have the county, and health and human services is county function. And that's why we have churches and nonprofits and charitable organizations so that everybody's kind of pulling together and doing their job. There isn't, that doesn't mean that we can't partner with them, that we can't find out how the government can partner with them in the ways that are more along the lines of our job, whether it's permits or what other things that we can be doing for them, or fundraisers that they do that we can make things easier for them, or whatever it is. But to just outright give cash to some and not to others, I think, is where the, where the big problem has come for people in the past. And I have to agree with them.
Is your preference then to remove this line item, or to?
Yes, it would be. And, and that's sad for me. And I'm going to tell you why. Money's fungible. And Linda's right. It's a small amount. We blink that away with a, with a consultant. I mean, we practically sneeze that money away sometimes. And it's a shame. Because I, I do, I'm not saying that there isn't one of them on here that I don't think is worthy of, of what they give to the community, or what they're trying to do, or that their efforts or their mission statement, or their values, or their morals are, are beyond reproach. And I'm glad that they've been getting the money. But I can't overcome that that is not the function of, of a city government. And we will never be the end all in to all of the people's needs. We can try and support and partner the organizations and the other governmental entities that do do those functions. But it is not the city. And while, she's right. It's a small amount of money, but it's not being spent right. It's not up to us to do this and pick winners and losers amongst charitable organizations to, to do this. And that's how it comes across to the public. And they're not liking it. So I would agree with getting rid of it.
Thank you. Go back to Linda for another comment?
Well, I agree with some of what you're saying and others. I still say that we're picking winners and losers for everything all the time, by making choices about our budget. This really is not about sustaining care for any one of these organizations. It's about partnering with people who are doing work in our city. And cities do do human services. Lorette, I think you'll look at, there's a number of cities that do and have money for that. I think one of the other things that I heard when I first came on, which might be a good thing for us to investigate, is that in the tri-county series, or in our county itself, Inglewood often got overlooked for social services. That was the claim. And that's why we did some of this. I would really like to know, how much do they really serve our own city from the county, when it comes to, you know, tri-county health, other kinds of services to know. And I don't want to have you spend a lot of time on this, but it would be nice to know, to what extent are our citizens benefiting from some of the social services of the county? At what, you know, and I know that's, you have to pull that out of Inglewood versus real Inglewood versus Cherry Creek Reservoir Area, Inglewood or wherever, on an extrapaho county. So I, I really do think this is symbolic in saying, we like you here. There are things that are happening in our city that this benefits us overall with, and it's, it's keeping the goodwill. And it's a very small amount of money to do that. And I think we know that these agencies are using it well. I've never questioned whether the money that they receive is unwisely used. So I agree that all of us probably give to organizations like this, hope we continue to do that. That doesn't mean that we don't have some avenue to care for our citizens that when they have true need, and when we can partner in and affirm others that are doing it on our behalf. So.
Amy, were you wanting to comment?
But I know I'm in the minority, so I just have to say that.
No, no problem. The one downside to our system here, I suppose. You know, I, I am open to taking a closer look at these with this council. I, you know, my preference would probably be to keep the line item in, have that discussion. You know, I could, I'd be open to some small reduction to it. But, you know, at this point, I wouldn't favor just getting rid of it unilaterally. You know, looking through the list, there are a couple that are local, I think. And so again, I guess I would, I would prefer to have that conversation. But I'd certainly be willing to honor the will of council. I've heard a few members say that they would like to remove this line item. I've heard some say they want to keep it, and I've heard some say that they're kind of on the fence on it. So I guess I want to go and get a consensus on how we want to move forward with this. Can you guys, Rick, you've already weighed in, I think. Rita, you've already weighed in. Lorette, you've already weighed in. Linda's already weighed in.
I say keep it. And I say, let's do it a year together and see what it's like.
I agree.
I mean, when I went, I went through the process, it was like, oh, I mean, I really did think it was weird when I first came on. I just was surprised by the whole thing. I have not heard people complain about it at all. And I've asked people in my neighborhood, and we've gone, you know, both sides, whatever, what do you think? And at the end of the day, it's like, wow, it's just a little amount of money, and we don't do anything else to help people that are on the edges in our city that can really help us in the long run keep stability. So.
Well, I think the distinction between social services and, you know, outright charity should be, you know, distinguished. And, and maybe we need to take a harder look about what is the target market for us that we're trying to do with this money? You know, it's not just any and all good things for the city of Inglewood. Maybe it focuses on food delivery. Maybe it focuses on, you know, one specific social issue we think we can actually have an impact on.
At the time, I think we were probably at the higher level of the money when I came on. We were going through such times, and we still kept up with it because we knew people were hungry, and it was one more avenue. But I, you know, I think I'd love to see it focused. I wanted cities of service to be focused. I think what you did this weekend, Eric, with some of the stuff, show us some focus areas we could do. And maybe we decide what's the issue for the city, and we focus on those organizations for the, it's, I mean, if you've applied for government grants before, you know people are picked and chosen, chosen all the time. And there's oftentimes a theme that they're picked by, or, so that part doesn't bother me, but I'm used to being told no. So.
Amy, you kind of already weighed on this right, too. I've got you down as wanting to keep it. Steve, where are you at on this?
I think I'm the one that is either going to have us keep it or not.
Such a coward, Steve.
And there is an in-between option, so.
Well, it, well.
I think so. A reduction and a conversation.
Well, the in-between would be a reduction. But for us to move forward, I think we should go ahead, leave it in. But we do need to have a, a real discussion as to why do we give to certain groups? You know, and frankly, I think whatever group it is, there should be a strong benefit to our local community in order to justify helping with, with their activities.
I think we have consensus to keep it in there. Should it be at a reduced level, I think is the next question for council?
I don't think we can do that until we have the discussion as to what, what, what is our criteria?
We could if that was our will.
Well, true, true, true.
You know, because again, we could allocate those funds and set them aside for 2017, and then when the time for the distribution came, we could actually have that discussion. And just because we've allocated, it doesn't mean that we need to distribute it. If, during that conversation, if we keep the allocation at 20, we decide to only, you know, give away 10, we could, we could just be under budget on that line item, and that wouldn't be the end of the world. So I'd be fine with that outcome as well. Any others want to weigh in on a potential reduction? Rick?
You know, obviously, I would have preferred the line item be gone. But at the same time, you know, what I would have advocated for is like Meals on Wheels. I have been to elderly's homes and they receive their meals, and this is part of this. And that is the only good meal they're getting that day.
I will say Meals on Wheels, just to give a personal.
If we were going to remove it, I would have been, then my next step would, then we need to ask our community to help pitch in for, for Meals on Wheels, or a couple of the other things. Because if you've ever sat with, and I have, and I've helped some of our local residents get set up with Meals on Wheels, because, you know, they were hungry and they needed some help. So I would have said, we, you know, we as a city need to ask some community businesses, say, hey, could you pitch in? You know, maybe, and maybe we should still do this anyway, is pitch in and say, listen, you know, here's a need of our community. We have elderly who need food, and Meals on Wheels is already on a tight budget as it is. They're one of the, probably one of the few on here that would really be affected by the, the money we're not giving them. So I know that it's a cost per item, but it's, you know, either way, I would have advocated, let's, let's get some help with that. But that's, that's my comment on that. If we're going to get rid of it, let's, let's find a, a way to at least make sure our elderly are fed. Even though that's not a government responsibility, I think it's a community responsibility. And in the past, we as council have partnered in with that. Again, I agree with Ms. Berettin, it is not our money. It is our residents' money. So, but that's one of the programs that I've had, not had any issue with residents supporting as Meals on Wheels. So that's, that's all I got to say.
Brett?
Like I said, I think all of them are worthy. I think all of them are, do a wonderful job. And I really would prefer that this not get down into that conversation today about, about that we're picking who we're going to spend the money with tonight. If, I would agree with you, that if you're, if we're going to go ahead and leave this in as a line item, leave it in as a line item. And let's have a, a prepared, thoughtful discussion about who we're going to give the money to if it's going to be left in.
Do we want to have that discussion before applications are due, is the question? Probably. When are the applications due?
Can I clarify one thing, please?
Sure.
I thought you were asking for the budget item, and that's what we were discussing tonight, was the budget, and whether we're going to leave the item in the budget or not in the budget.
Or reduced.
But we weren't, I wasn't prepared to have a discussion on allocating this money, or who's worthy or who's not tonight. Okay.
Agreed. Any idea when the applications are due? I think there's probably, you know, is anybody object to having this discussion prior to the application process so that we can say, hey, we want to put this out there? Because it is, you know, they got to fill out the app, and it's a process for us. So that we can say, hey, we want to put this out there because it is, you know, they got to fill out the app and it's a process for us.
Last meeting in October that you determine how that money is allocated. So, if you're going to do that, you need to have.
So, applications may be out. But that's when we'd have all the applications in front of us. And so, I guess that's what I'm wondering is, you know, have we already kind of put this out there? Are some already prepping their applications and things? Okay. Okay, great. So, we'll have this conversation hopefully relatively soon then.
When did we do it last year?
Around that same time of year?
Yeah, it's around the same time last year. Essentially, once you approve the budget, that's when we prepared the applications and advertised on the city's website for it. And I think that is a whole nother thing that needs to be discussed too, that I'm not prepared to discuss tonight either. But we wanted to understand if you're going to continue this program and then we wanted to help you determine how you disseminate it. Because it seems like it's always the same groups that people go to. People have their, no offense if I say this, but their pet project group that they go to and say, here, you need to fill out this application to get funding. You need to gain some other criteria for us to work with.
I don't think any of us go to any of the organizations and tell them to fill it out. I don't think we ever, I haven't. I don't think any of us have. You have? Oh, okay.
I have not, no.
I have not either. So, I assume that it always went out in a, to all of those that, and then it's up on the website. And we don't get very many new ones because we have a limited number of them here. So, I've never given them to anybody.
We did it our first year on council in late November, early December.
I thought it was much later. Yeah, much, much later. Because we had, I had just come on and I thought, what is this?
And I don't know that we necessarily have to have that allocation or that decision in October. I mean, there's nothing that's forcing us to do that. I think that's just historical practice. So, I think we have this conversation when we're ready and as long as they're not, you know, filling out applications and I feel like we've got some time, so.
It was my understanding that we were kind of giving it around Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Prior to Christmas, yeah.
I mean, about the time of the holidays is where I think some of it happened, but.
Right, that's why.
That's why it's historically that time.
They weren't doing it later. I mean, they were trying to do it around the holidays for, and prior to their fiscal year starting, if they were on a calendar year.
They were on a January.
So that they knew how much money they were getting and not getting. So, I don't think it was later. I do think that the timeline, Eric's correct about the timeline and that's only fair.
I'm saying it makes sense and historically, we've done it that way. I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out that there's nothing that requires us to get it done by that date. Steve?
Although it would be nice to have the criteria listed immediately. I think we're kind of under a time crunch. We have so many things on our table right now. We can come up with our criteria, you know, before we make our final decisions. That will help us sort through these applications, but it's not absolutely crucial that we get it on to our websites today.
We do have some criteria from before that we could send out just for, to jog.
I think we'll reset this topic for a study session and try to provide as much background information and get this on the study session as soon as we can without bumping anything that we see as a huge priority. So, we'll try to get this back in front of council so that we can have this discussion prior to the holidays coming around and with plenty of time for application process if we want to move forward with it this year. Does that sound good to everyone? Yep. Lorette, you don't want to talk again, do you? Let's go on to the last item, which was MOA. I know there were some, wanted to have some discussion about that. Mr. Keck had provided a little bit of background suggesting that this was a contractual requirement at one point for the city, but that time has passed and we just have not had an opportunity to have a substantive conversation, I think, with MOA about what the future is. Ultimately, I think that all of us, hopefully around this table, value the relationship and see them as a major asset for our community. And, you know, I think undoubtedly, our community really values this partnership. And so, and I'm really excited about the new communication efforts and joint, joining and making MOA even better and more influential in our community. I think that's a really great opportunity with arts and history to kind of really differentiate ourselves as a uniquely desirable place to be and I see them as integral to that. That being said, you know, I think we need to have a conversation with them. I'd be hesitant personally to withdraw the funding until we had a conversation with them and understood how that might impact them. I know that we had them here last year. We didn't kind of get to that level of conversation. And so, you know, I know that we were hoping to have them prior to budget time. Unfortunately, that wasn't possible. And we will be having them, yes, next month, so relatively soon. But I just wanted to provide that background information as a sort of kick it off for council. And Amy, are you talking now?
Oh, I was first, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure, honestly, I wasn't sure if you'd flipped it over or not. Go ahead, go ahead, Lorette.
Yeah, it was laying down and then, no, it was like dominoes. The presentation that they gave previously didn't include any financial information. I don't give $100,000 to my church, but they provide me with financial information. When I donate to an organization, whether it's the Lions Club or Meals on Wheels, they provide their financial information on what they're doing with their money. And the concern that happened several years ago was when a Guide Star report came out that the CEO was making $180,000. Madden was putting in some 90 or $100,000. We were putting that in plus the, what we give there. And the CEO is his daughter. And people were upset about that because it just looked like, one of the reasons, arguments that came was that we weren't going to get rid of them because we were having some matching funds. But all those matching funds, then between what we're doing and what he was doing, we're all going to pay his daughter's salary. So, there was some, there's some concern about the value we're getting, whether we have the assets that they create, what they're doing. The original piece that was the Museum of Outdoor Arts, who was supposed to be a collaborative municipalities all joined into this and most of the others have gone away and stopped participating and there's a reason for that. And we need to, if we're going to make a financial investment, we need to know what our partners are doing and what they're doing with the money because it doesn't seem too much of a partnership on their part. They're taking it and I don't give to any organization that isn't willing to tell me what they're doing with their funds. And they didn't come last time, a few months ago with the, just before the election, I think it was. They didn't come to the table with that kind of information. And we really need to have a heart-to-heart on what's going on with the funding and how, so that we can speak, if we decide to keep doing this, to exactly what our money is going for. And if they can be self-sufficient, then maybe that's the direction that they should take. Maybe we don't need to give them money. Maybe we just need to give them a space. But we need to get all of that piece put in there and have some real numbers and figure out what we're doing here.
Thank you. Steve?
Okay, you know, the concern about their CEO. Now, there's a brief conversation I had with them just recently and they said that that particular issue has been taken care of. And yeah, I have no problems in wanting to see, you know, some financials on how they spend the money within the community. Building usage was something that I talked about last year and I assigned a dollar sum to it. Since then, we've, you know, I have a better understanding of the restrictions on this property. So, it isn't like we can really rent that space out. They are providing a service to our community and in the Kahoots survey, it shows what they're doing has a very positive influence upon our community. And they are going to be bringing us more information on financials when they come and talk to us. That's one of the things that he told me they're going to do now. To the detail, maybe, you know, the recommendations that other council members has had for what they're looking for, we probably need to make sure they understand they need to bring it. And last year, I spoke about, you know, I wasn't sure if that was money that should go to them because we just weren't getting what we were paying for, or at least in my opinion, from the standpoint of they weren't fulfilling all parts of the contract at that point in time. And we didn't really see any community projects. It was more projects that were out there for, how do I say? It was basically projects to help their foundation. Since then, they brought in, and I'm not sure what his official title is. Yeah, Tim has came in and I've seen that he's working with cultural arts quite a bit. They're working on other projects within the community for art projects such as the utility boxes. They have other things planned. So, this next round, I am a lot more, I have more warm fuzzies about actually funding this because the city is getting something out of it. It's that PR end of it. It's that quality of life. It's what makes our community a place that you want to come and spend some time to live in. It's, it makes our community not just a place you go to, you know, put your keys in your car.
Amy, you're next.
Thank you. I think the presentation last time, I think there was a miscommunication of some kind between us and them and what we were expecting. And I think this time, I hope it's been a little more clear to them what we're asking for. And if there's specific budget items or things that we want to see from them, I think we should clearly communicate that. I think what they offer our community is incredible and there's no way we could provide this on our own with our budget. I mean, their collection alone is so expansive and I've even heard people come from all other cities. They say, oh, Inglewood, that's that city with all the art, right? And I'm like, yep, it is, you know, but it's, it's not ours, but you know, it's perceived as ours. And I think that goes a long way. And I'm really looking forward to their upcoming presentation. And they've done a lot, like Steve said, with cultural arts and being really active in the community with Inglewood residents. And I would definitely support maintaining them at this, at this level and looking forward to hearing a presentation from them every year.
Thank you. Mr. Protem, what did I miss here? Okay, great. Further comments? Go ahead, Rick.
I'm grateful they're here. I think they add value to our community. I don't, I don't think I have a problem with the space, the space being there. I have a problem with the space, getting free space and getting money. I would agree that I wouldn't want them to move out. A couple of years ago, you and Linda may remember, I actually pulled their financials and had their, I got them to give me their annual budget and all the, all the information. They're a very wealthy group and the board, some of their board does make very, very good money. God bless them. It's great to live in America, you know, if you get it if you can. But I don't think if we stopped doing the financial part and continued working with them on the space part, I think we could still have a good partnership and still move forward. And so, I would love them to stay and continue using the space and being here. But I, as I have said for, every year I've been on council, I have a problem with that annual financial benefit to them. So, that's where I'm at.
Hugh, Rita?
Actually, I agree with the Mayor Protem and I would love to have them here too. They, I do believe they add value to the community. However, the expense is, I have in front of me an email from Mr. Keck that was sent just about a year ago. And it says, if one were to go back to the beginning of time, the city has provided the MOA with its annual $96,000 contribution in addition to the free rent, utilities and janitorial. The cost is $1,440,000. Add in the rent, utilities and janitorial at $2,072,298. The total cost for the last 15 years has been $3,510,229.80. And I believe that if, once they share.
How many years did you say that was?
Fifteen.
The 15 years. That that is a substantial amount of money that the city has already given them. And I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Protem Gillett that I'm okay with giving them the space, given the fact that there are qualifications on what we can do with the space. But giving them the $96,000 a year, when I believe they probably can afford to finance that themselves, I believe that is, that would be the most responsible thing for us to do. Thank you.
Hugh? You need to want to comment again?
Yeah, I just have a question. Have all of you been to any of their openings?
Oh, yeah.
Have anybody? Everyone has?
This one was the broken book one, that one.
Well, that's when we got the tour of that type.
They're really great. And the openings I've been to has been packed and people from all over the place. So, I just was curious to see if everyone had gone.
Steve?
I, you know, with, with the money that we give, I wouldn't have any problems in putting some stipulations with it as to how it's put back into our community. It's kind of like an advertising type of budget. You know, if, if that money was to simply go out of our community, then yeah, absolutely. I'd say we don't need to provide that. And, you know, if we need, as a group, if we want to talk about how much we do donate to them each year or provide them each year, then let's have the conversation. But I do want to emphasize that MOA, and I was a skeptic when I came on to council and last year I questioned them pretty extensively. But this past year, they've really shown that they want to be a part of the community and they realize they can do more. But Kahoots and other studies that we've had helps point out the fact that it is, they bring value to our community.
Thank you. I guess at this point, I'd be looking, Linda, I'll come to you if we could comment on trying to get some consensus on keeping it in, removing it, reducing it and whether or not that happens now or prior or post-conversation with MOA when they're coming in October. Linda?
Are you asking me to say something different than with that or just wait?
Yeah, I'm saying, if you don't mind weighing in on those, maybe after whatever you were going to say.
Okay, okay. It's no surprise that I think MOA is a real asset. I think I said this last year and I'm going to say it a little stronger. I think we have a sleeping giant down the hall that could create place-making here that we have never, ever had the vision for. And I said last year that we ought to be more proactive in involving them in our vision for the city rather than waiting for them to figure out how to do that. And I think it's on us, partly with how we're going to market ourselves. Are we going to use this or not? If it's not part of our vision, then perhaps we do need to think about it differently. I think it's, I wouldn't agree with that, but I think we need to frame it that way then too, is it doesn't fit our vision of what we're becoming and how we're marketing ourselves. I think it's a sleeping giant. If we're to use it well, we should be making money out of having them here and it should be bringing people into this community. I guess we have, maybe we have to ask ourselves, what else is here besides them for the kinds of folks that they're bringing in? I mean, it's a pretty eclectic group that comes to these because they're free, really. So, it's not like going to the Kirkland Museum or others and we're also, executive directors are paid at a very high, high level. Very few people in art make that kind of money. But I would, I would prefer that we wait to hear their, their presentation to us and, and then we create a plan for how to use them. I think they're a tremendous asset. We've never really had any vision for. So, yeah, and I also believe, I think a lot of the things you said, Steve, I mean, it is a part of, I don't, I don't know that Inglewood sees itself as an arts city. If you ask the normal citizen, I don't think so. They wouldn't say we're an arts-oriented city and yet we have this amazing asset of art here where other cities think that that must be our sort of focus. It's really an odd thing. I mean, I think that Kahoots would be interesting to ask them. I just don't think Inglewood, our own neighbors think that of ourselves, so. But it's a way to bring people in and to utilize and to be known. So, it's unfortunate we don't have anything here for them to go to before and after. Although, maybe that's the other piece we create. We help them use the. We help them use the restaurants around here to celebrate and do things before and after and get some revenue going with it. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just, that's not my area of expertise, but seems like there should be a whole lot more we could do. But I'd like to wait until after we hear their thing. And I do think that last year there was some kind of a miscommunication. They were also going through staffing changes for about a year and a half before that where just like they didn't get anywhere on some things. So it seems like we're on, we're on a good roll. You know, if they were going to stay here without paying them $90,000, great. I'd do that in a minute. I just think we should use it better.
Thank you. Rick?
Oh.
Okay, no problem.
Are you asking everybody that same question then?
Yeah, why don't we just go ahead and...
I agree with her.
Yeah, you're, you're with hers on that as well.
I agree that I would like to, I mean, not, and paying them the money because I think it's hard to pay a successful organization that makes a lot of money and then say we should pay them more and the space might be better. But I do agree with her that I'd like to make that decision after I have the financial information and we have the conversation.
Okay.
I didn't say you said that.
Yeah, I didn't hear you say that.
Okay, good. Okay, I thought that's what you said.
Nope, didn't, no. Why would they have asked?
Does anybody object to that?
No, I would just like to add also that I think if we, from our end, do a better job of ongoing communication and if there are things that we expect from them that aren't clear, we need to make it clear. If there are measurable items or benchmarks that we need to set up, then let's do that. And I think definitely that's a good point on the, the place making and the way finding. We've been talking about that for a long time and we haven't quite figured out how to do that. And I like the idea of involving them a little bit more in our bigger vision than just, you know, one-off, maybe once a year we hear from them.
Back to Linda here?
They do give us their annual report every year. So we do have the financials available, but if we have very specific ways we want them to break it down, we really should be clear about that. Yeah.
I think the question they need to, we need to hear the answer to is how does our $93,000 impact your operation? And that way we can evaluate that. Do others agree with that?
Or what does it bring to us? What are we getting for that?
Fair enough. However you want to state that.
How do they perceive?
Yeah, I mean, however you wanted to state that, but I agree. I mean, kind of the same, you know, gist, if you will, of, you know, what, what is that, what is the value of that?
I think Steve also, last year you asked for them to show return on some of the things that were in that original contract or agreement of why we had them. And I think that those are the kinds of things we should ask them to, again, tell us.
I guess I'm just thinking that we should probably have some communication with them to try to prep them for this meeting rather than, you know, having a similar conversation that we had last year where what they were presenting and our expectations somehow weren't lining up. Steve?
Going off of last year's memory, which may not be so good, but I think we brought up, or I brought up an issue about a dance studio, you know, and I understand why they're not doing it. They just weren't getting the participation. But, you know, if that was a part of the agreement, how does, how does, how do they compensate for not providing that? You know, I, and I don't know if that $96,000 was paying for the dance studio or not, but I'd also like to emphasize, the $96,000, I don't want to know what they do inside there that benefits us or little events within the building. I want to know what they're doing out in the community because the average citizen in Inglewood, I don't think they really come in to this building that much. But like the utility boxes and some of the other events they do, that's reaching out into our community, that's a direct benefit to our community. And if they can justify themselves that that 96 grand's doing all these events and creating this goodwill, I'm, I'm very interested in helping to fund that. If not, then no.
Lorette?
I don't want them to justify the 96,000. I want them to justify the three and a half million. I want them to justify all of the money in the funds that they get from us. We're not just talking about potentially the, the cash that goes out. We've got to talk about all the funds. And it is reasonable for people in this community to feel a little angst with giving a wealthy, well-heeled organization more money if they don't need it. If we're already giving them a whole package, why are we giving them cash if maybe they only need the space that's a way we can participate? I'm kind of starting to disagree with the, with the whole thing. I want the kind of financial report. I don't want a PowerPoint. I don't want them showing me pictures of art. I want a financial report like I would expect from my church if I was giving them $100,000. That's what the community would like to see, is to justify why we have to give them their money, the taxpayers' money, for them to be here. Now, I appreciate if they want to show us some of the things that they're doing in the community, but I want a financial report, not just PowerPoint, not just art pictures. I want an actual financial report.
Thank you. Sounds like we've got some consensus perhaps to have this conversation after meeting with them. Is that where folks are at or on this, or folks are at on this?
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Lorette, were you on that as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I think that we need to, you know, I agree that there probably needs to be a value proposition just generally for the past too, but I, I don't, you know, the, the decision is not to take the three and a half million back from them. The, the decision is, are we going to continue to, you know, what are we going to continue to do? And so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to spend too much time or ask them to do too much efforts with, you know, reviewing the history of everything. I really, you know, want to try to focus on what's the decision in front of us, which I think is...
Quite misunderstood. I don't mean that. I mean, the whole amount of what we give them has to be included. I just want, they don't have to reinvent the wheel. I just want the current financials as if they were talking to the investor that we are.
Fair enough.
Okay.
And I do think that, you know, they would benefit and we would probably benefit from some communication between us prior to the meeting so that they can come prepared and we can come prepared as well and have a little bit more productive conversation this year around, hopefully. Go ahead, Linda.
So just asking, Eric, what have you heard from us that we're asking them for? Just so, because I do think we somehow last year missed a beat somewhere and I don't want to have you get stuck in the middle again.
What I wrote down for this particular item is that we need to communicate very clearly to the MOA what is expected of them for three October.
That includes their original agreement or contract versus what they actually providing, an actual financial report provided, what, and what they're doing out in the community, not just inside here with their, their shows that they have.
That fits Inglewood.
Exactly. Yeah, their shows.
Villers-Green or something.
Right. Is that accurate?
I think focusing on the impact of the loss of the 93 as well would also be an interesting piece because, you know, I, okay, you know, we've got this operating budget, but if you didn't have the 95 this year, what would that impact? Would that impact your operations?
We asked them that last year. They, they won't answer that. They can't.
I think it's a question where that, I mean, I'm going to ask it. I guess prepare them for that is what I'm saying.
I'll let them know.
Mayor Jefferson.
What does it impact? What will they cut?
Yeah.
I mean, I testified at the county with the David Taylor Dance Studio issue. That was a totally separate, we got, we got screwed over on that entire deal with that. But that was separate from what was going on with what they did and whatever deal he made that he's still supposed to be doing has nothing to do with the Museum of Outdoor Arts. That...
Yeah.
That, that dance studio was specifically done for them and then he went to go, yeah, he...
He got out of business.
He got Littleton, then he got us, then he got Jefferson County. He always found somebody to give him some money and do some stuff. But that space, it would be nice to get the background on that space, why it got, why it was hard to lease then afterwards. He took all of that property out of there, the mirrors and the floors and all that stuff he was allowed to take. And we were supposed to be receiving some kind of in-payment, the performances, which I assume that a couple of councils later and maybe administration all got forgotten too, but then somebody came and leased that space and was able to get it really inexpensively because they were willing to do the tenant finish on it. So, and that happened after I was off of council, but it, it's a totally separate, I mean, that was never connected with Museum of Outdoor Arts or their requirement, yeah.
Maybe a quick memo on that would be helpful for us to clarify the distinction between the dance studio and MOA and our relationship with those entities.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, we got a lot of clarification issues tonight. Councilmember choice, Mayor Protem, you want to kick us off?
Sure. I had a wonderful ride along with Heidi Bradley, Officer Heidi Bradley.
There it goes.
If you want an awesome ride along, ride with her. She is amazing and she has a way of de-escalating things like I've never seen anybody before. It's the, I think, people don't know how to handle her. She's got a strong German accent and she's friendly and, and I kept, we were dealing with a couple gentlemen right outside this building that night and she had them down and all I could think of is, you know, don't take her for granted, she will kill you. You know, it was just like, you know, she put her police boot in. But it was a very well-done. She, she has an extreme care for our community and it was just nice to spend 10 hours with her in a truck, so, and talk about city and about her, what she would like to see and how she, you know, she would like to move forward with growing in, in her role. So that, that was just a very, very, I want to thank the, the police for allowing me to, you know, have butt space in their vehicle that night, but it was, it was very well-done. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Rita?
Sorry.
Thank you. I actually am kind of thinking that I would like to talk about perhaps going to council meetings only on the first and third Mondays and doing study sessions only on the second and fourth Mondays, perhaps to get more things done. And because a lot of times on the first and third Mondays, we kind of have to cut short and so anyway, I would like for us to consider that.
Thank you. Folks want to weigh in on that issue during their member choice, they certainly can.
I'm good with it.
Lorette?
Well, as to Rita's point, for the, for the other communities around, I am dumbfounded at how they're able to function their cities on a whole hell of a lot less time than what we spend. Maybe to Linda's point, as she's brought up so many times after a couple hours together, maybe we should spend less time together. Maybe we don't need to spend as much time as we're spending on things. I'm listening to these mayor-manager meetings and quite honestly, all of this soup keeps getting put in and we keep putting, I think it does put a lot of pressure on the staff and it doesn't help us to focus or prioritize our time on what we need to be spending time on. I, I would agree. I'd like to, I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us be able to function in a way that we can go ahead and go into depth on some of the issues with a little bit more of where we're going on for our purpose and stuff. I think we do a lot of fluff on, on things. We just keep throwing in every, one of the concerns you brought up when you were first mayor was that you were concerned that the previous council, and you've sat on several. There's been a lot of changes that you've been on Joe. And I thought that you made a good point when you said that every time somebody brings up a concern, having it turned into a study session probably wasn't for the best. And I think sometimes we're headed back toward that just because somebody has a, a comment or something. And sometimes we're doing things, I think, too fast and sometimes we're doing things that I'm not sure that we need to spend that kind of time on. Similar to like what we do with the Eiff and Emir thing tonight, there was, we've already discussed that. We've had issues brought forward. What we really needed was not necessarily a rehash of all that again, but to move, kind of move forward and start, what does that decision look like? And that's what I thought was going to be brought forward. So maybe if we could kind of analyze a little bit more about how we're spending this time instead of, just it's like Groundhog Day sometimes, so, and, and I think that that would be a little easier on the staff. I don't know how Aurora or Littleton, Littleton's bigger than we are and they, they don't have a study session every single time. I'd like to, I know that it's been difficult because when we have citizens involved and they're taking up a lot of the time to come and talk to us at, at a meeting, but that's the only time that they have. So I know it's going to be tough to balance this, but I think that we have an opportunity to really look at how we're using staff time, how we're using our own time and the issues that we're addressing. I just, I mean, when I first came on council, I have no idea how, how in the world that works. When you have four major programs going on all at one time, that any of them were getting the kind of thought and process to do this, it just becomes this whirlwind of stuff. And so maybe there's some things that have to be more prioritized so that we can better use our time and not go so crazy.
Thank you. Linda?
And I didn't have anything for councilmember's choice.
I think I'm a little bit confused because I'm hearing in that, that we have too many things happening and not enough happening. So I don't know how you read that, Mayor, but you're a couple...
I'm at a loss. I'm going to honor the will of this council.
No, so here, here is my concern.
You asked me for a co-creation.
Oh, no, I'm fine, I'm fine.
I don't think we've done any fluff. I think we have some very tough issues. I do think we don't use our time well at times, especially during the regular meeting. That's where I think we misuse our time. And I think there's some ways we can get around that by allowing the citizens to speak as much as they want and for us to hold back and not make it a trial where we're trying to bring out every piece of evidence, but instead we turn it over to staff who are professional and know how to deal with each thing that's being brought up. I'm very uncomfortable with the kinds of conversations we're having in there to the point where I think we're possibly maybe illegal at times and maybe bordering on ethics and setting ourselves up for problems. So that's if anything where I think the change could, could help if we would make some decisions together about that. I am also very concerned that the two of you are not able to meet in a way that is productive. I know...
Were you commenting about the mayor-manager meeting? I apologize.
The mayor-manager meeting.
Yeah, you think something's illegal, is that what, and unethical?
No, 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 no. In there, I think when we're, when we're making comments about things we don't know anything about at the regular meeting, I don't want to make comments about sludge or this or that. I want to say, this is being turned over to this and that's who needs to do it. I am not here to pretend I know anything about this and I can reread some of these things and reiterate what I understand, but I am not the one to rule. I don't think we should be ruling up there and sometimes I feel like we're a court of law trying to help citizens. I think why, we want to help, but in the process, I'm afraid we're undoing ourselves and going till midnight is so unproductive. So if anything, that's the meeting that I think we need to work on. I don't think we've done fluff here or there are times where I think we could be better prepared coming into these meetings. I really appreciate that we have, now we know when it's an information, when it's a decision. Tonight we could have used a little bit more information for the Eiff and Emir stuff, but we don't know that sometimes till we get into it. So I'm fine with that. It takes time. I don't think it's knee-jerk reaction then. I think it's, we've actually been very careful. What I'm concerned about though is the mayor-manager meeting. I'm bothered that two of you are not both there all the time and really being able to focus and I'm afraid that we've hamstrung you with this open meeting stuff to the point where you can't just sit down and go through and everything gets picked at from the people who have listened and misinterpreted or misunderstood some of what you're wanting to do. And I, I don't know how you're feeling about it, but I feel like that should be the meeting where if you're, you're making the decisions on what's going on or agenda, you should be briefing Eric and staff and, and attorneys that this is what we're going to need for this council to make this decision. That's how I did it in the past and, and you miss things in that process and you're going to miss things because you can't totally think about what each one of us wants. But I don't want you to be hamstrung and are you hamstrung by that? I, I'm uncomfortable with the way it is and the way that you get attacked about your city or about your mayor, mayor pro tem meetings all the time. It's, it's, it shouldn't be an issue. It's a planning meeting to help us be productive. So I don't know, but I would, I would be, I would be, I would love to not have more long meetings. So if we want to let go of a study session, fine, but I hope we're productive then. I'm just worried that we've got a lot on our plates and we don't agree on a lot of things and we go round and round and I'm taking more time than I want to be even. So anyway, I didn't have anything else other than, yeah.
Thank you. Amy?
I like councilmember Russell's suggestion. I think the, if we can find ways to be more efficient with our time and more productive, I think that would be great. You know, we don't need to be here till midnight regularly. I think that would be fantastic. I do want to ask about the kind of annual reports of the boards and commissions. Is that still on our radar? Are we still going to do that? I know there was a lot of boards and commissions that didn't kind of make the schedule yet. I know there was a lot of boards and commissions that didn't kind of make the schedule yet, so just wonder if that's still on our radar at all.
You know, we have not scheduled any additional, you know, I've communicated this, has everyone communicated this, I made an announcement at the board and commission appreciation evening. No, no other boards have come forward is all I can say. And so I guess this is probably a reiteration to everybody to try to get their groups to sign up for some night and get these things scheduled. Perhaps staff should be reaching out to the chairs as well. Maybe we need to, we need the chairs to be contacted perhaps. Is that adequate, Amy?
I think we should ask them. I don't think we're going to, yeah, I think we should tell them, this is your night, this is your night.
Well, we should tell them, we want, we want to have you somewhere in this window, when, when works for you is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, just the time to hear from them and no, you know, particular.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, we decided not to do it, I just think that, you know, there hasn't been the exact onus. So I'm suggesting that staff just go and contact the chairs and get those scheduled. Thank you.
All right, first with the study sessions, I, I believe, well, in general, our meetings, there's better ways of manage them. Frankly, with what we work with and what we need to work with, I don't see how we can limit, you know, I mean, we still need to do our, our study sessions like we're doing right now in the council meetings. So as much as I would like not to be here, I don't think it's best for our community. I also want to bring up a couple of issues here which are potentially lively discussions here, but we kind of talked about prayer here recently and, you know, this weekend after I, I spent time out in our community, you know, walking with an individual who is blind to get a better idea of how to make this city more walkable for all, not just one group, after going to the hazardous waste roundup and also going over to Be a Tool and working with all of those folks, you know, I, I really care about these people and I, and there's a big diverse population within our community. I believe that we should always, I believe prayer is a very important part of our council meeting. I think it helps put us into a mindset that we're here to serve, not to do, but to serve. But I am rather uncomfortable with dictating to the community a specific religion. I really feel that we should not end our prayers with, in the name of Jesus Christ, because not everybody in this community is, is Christian. Not everybody, you know, we've got Jewish, we've got Buddhists, we've got Muslims, we've got all sorts of religions. And so we need to, in my opinion, and I think the courts would agree with me on this, that when we do prayer, we need to be non-denominational. There's nothing wrong in admitting, you know, to recognizing there's a God and I think it's really important that we recognize that there's a God. But as council here, we need to either say, we're going to continue to say, in the name of Jesus Christ, or we're going to make this a non-denominational type of prayer. And I don't know when you guys want to talk about this, but I think it's something we should do soon. I think there's also an issue about process of when we make people stand, you know, for the pledge of allegiance, I think that's very appropriate. And I think the way we go about saying for prayer, and this is kind of, and I, I don't have a good solution for it, but we need to potentially identify that you're not being forced to stand, you're not going to be ostracized if you do not stand. You know, so that's a conversation I think we really need to be having and having very soon because we're opening ourselves up for some liabilities and frankly, it's just, I don't think it's, it's right in the way that we're going about doing it. The other issue that council needs to be talking about is ex parte communications. We need a policy on ex parte communications and we also need it clear as to what the ramifications if, if a council member chooses to go outside of our legal counsel and share information that's in executive session, talking to an opposing attorney, because we, you know, we work as a group here, it's all, all of us. And the moment one council member goes and talks to the opposing attorney, they're putting us in a very difficult situation because none of us, well, minus the mayor, none of us are attorneys. And we could say something that's meant with the, the biggest of heart and the best of intentions, but we don't necessarily know the legal ramifications and what we're opening up our city for. And, well, we need a policy as to what we're going, how we're going to handle ex parte. How are we going to handle it when we go into a court case? You know, what is a, what is a council's recourse if somebody's sharing information from executive sessions? So I know that's not a conversation for tonight, but it, it does need to happen.
No, fair enough. Thank you for bringing all those up. I, I've got a few things, I want to respond to those things, I also wanted to disseminate one of these to each of you. This is from friends over at Dr. Cog regarding Federal Boulevard Traffic Signalization Timing Project going on in Inglewood. So this is just sort of FYI, many of this, especially folks whose district it is. I, you know, thank you, Member Yates, for bringing up the prayer issue. I wholeheartedly agree. I really do think that I'm fine with an invocation to kick off the, the meeting, but I totally agree that Jesus's name should be out of it personally. I, I like the idea of an invocation, but I do feel uncomfortable with, with the word Jesus being included. And so, you know, I don't know if we want to weigh in on that before our next meeting. The issue of standing is obviously kind of a hot button issue now as well with the, with the pledge of allegiance even, and so, you know, I, in my mind, it's relatively clear that you're not required to stand, you know, that, you know, if you were to be seated, that you wouldn't be, you know, escorted out. But perhaps we just stand and we do not ask everyone to stand, we just say, please prepare for the invocation and the, and the pledge of allegiance and we stand. And, you know, that way it seems like less of a command to the, to the folks and the folks who want to stand will certainly stand and I would guess that everyone's going to stand or the most majority would stand. As far as the ex parte policy, I mean, I think the policy's clear, no ex parte communication. The, the issue is the sanction, you know, having had a conversation with our previous city attorney about that, you know, I asked him, well, what's recourse if you do ex parte communication? He says, you don't have executive session is your option. You know what I mean? Anything to add to that maybe, Mr. Comer?
Not at the moment.
Yeah, you know, I suppose that if we all agreed to some rules that allowed for some sanctions, that that might be a possibility, but, you know, I feel like it is fairly clear that, you know, when we have those executive sessions prior to that information going out to the public, that we should be honoring that privacy of the group until the information does become public. As far as the study sessions, I, I understand that we want to limit the amount of hours that we're here. I think that we would candidly be hamstringing this council if we chose not to have study sessions. And, you know, if we want to take a hands-off approach to managing the city, I'm open to that, but in my opinion, that would lead to a ton less influence on this administration from this council and I think would be a very bad decision in my opinion. So again, I would not support that, but again, I will honor the will of this council. You know, a few issues have kind of been brought up at the tail end of the meeting, I suppose. Would, would council be open to one round robin here and then we can deal with those issues at a later date? To see whether we want to deal with the prayer issue, to see if we want to deal with the ex parte communication issue, to see if we want to deal with the study session issue. You know, again, these are a lot of issues and this is an example of what we're dealing with in study sessions and, you know, I understand everybody wants to get out of here, but until we deal with these issues, they're not going to resolve themselves. And so again, I, I generally agree with Councilmember Olson's comments that I feel like the areas that we're really going long is, is engaging with public and not necessarily, in my opinion, how we're managing the study sessions. You know, certainly not the way we're managing the agendas. If anything, it's, you know, how we interact with each other and the questions and comments that we generate through that process and whether or not those are super productive or not. I think it's a policy of sort of self-policing and understanding that we're all trying to be as efficient as possible as a group. And I think if we're conscious of that as we're having conversations with each other and conversations with the public, I think we'd be, be in a better spot. Is everybody open for a round robin on this? Rick, are you open to that? You want to start us off? You want to reply on the prayer or the ex parte or the study sessions? Steve already did.
Are we doing all of them or just one at a time or?
I'd like to do all of them if you don't mind. I mean, you've already weighed in on the study session unless you've got a change of opinion.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The prayer, I, I said last time, I don't feel comfortable having it one religion dominated, so I would like to kind of diversify that if possible. A question with that, we had a, we received a letter asking for a response in 30 days. Did we respond to that? Did we do anything? Okay. And then what was the other one?
The others were the ex parte issue and the study session issue.
I guess as far as the ex parte, we would just need to decide what the ramifications would be, right?
Yeah, I mean, do we need to have that discussion, I guess is the question.
If it becomes, if it keeps becoming an issue, then yeah. I don't know that we need to have that right now.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Linda?
I do think we need to talk about ex parte and talk about any past offenses that we are bothering any of us and make sure that going forward, we know what all of our expectations are with each other. In terms of prayer, I think we left Counselor kind of Russell on the, hanging on a limb there and then she came back and had to do the next prayer again, nobody offered. So I'm willing to do the invocation and if you can give me, I mean, I'll, I'll rotate in once in a while. If you give me the cards, I think there's some really cool ones in there that are a little bit less religious faith oriented and a little bit more broadly based and invocation-like. I don't think that it should be her responsibility to do it right all the time the way everybody would want it. It's like singular. So I don't know what you, what you think about that, but I think we've got to jump in and help out if we're wanting to make a change.
Thank you. Barrett?
If, if you're worried about the legal ramifications of it, you all received in your May 2014 packet, the Supreme Court decision, that certainly backs up what Councilmember Rita Russell has been doing. So there isn't a liability issue here and you all got that information in your packet when the court decision came out. The comment, Amy, about if we keep having a problem with ex parte and the assumption that there's been some violation of it and the assumption that I violated it is offensive. I wasn't asked, nobody came to me and gave me any information about what they were going to do or that they're going to go ahead and start making assumptions and accusations, which I find offensive and in, in my opinion, illegal. You can't just attack somebody and accuse them of something and not know what you're talking about. Part of the problem in proceeding with some of these legal issues as we have is that council has not been consulted. We have court cases going on and we have not been talked to yet, nor have we had an executive session on what this council even wanted to do in moving forward with this court case. It's inappropriate, it hasn't happened in the past and I don't think it should be happening now and we should probably have an executive session before the court date happens in September. That left me open. That left me vulnerable when some attorney provides some documentation and I'm advised by the mayor and the city manager to contact her and correct her information and I've got no legal counsel. And I believe I copied all of you on that email to say, I am awaiting legal counsel to advise me. That has not happened. What I have had is a bunch of angry, unbelievable behavior from people, making assumptions that there's already been this violation, making comments in public on the record as if something has happened when you don't know what you're talking about. The mayor and the city manager should have never advised me and they did so in writing.
I'm sorry, who advised you, Lorette? We've talked about this several times. I would appreciate a correction on the record. Who did you receive an email from?
From both you and from Eric Keck, from Eric Keck.
I was CC'd on the email and you keep saying it's from me and I don't appreciate that.
I apologize because he referenced having a conversation with you in there, so for that I apologize. It gave me the impression, and I will correct that then, it gave me the impression that you were advising me with what the city manager, then I guess the city manager was advising me to call the opposing council after they had filed the lawsuit, who I had not spoken to after they filed the lawsuit. And if you continue on that route, then you're slandering me and I'll take action. I want it stopped. I want it.
You're threatening me?
I want it stopped.
I have never mentioned your name, I have never mentioned the case.
You are beyond the pale.
This is not what you're claiming.
Thank you, Steve, yes, please. Steve, please receive, please give the floor to Lorette.
There's obviously been these comments being made, if, if this problem continues, these conversations have to stop. If you guys aren't going to go ahead and get the information before you go making public statements and if, you should make a fool of yourself, that's your problem. I went to the proper people, I told them how I felt about the advice that they had given, I had to seek out legal advice on my own because I didn't think that what they were asking me to do was an appropriate thing to do. We should have already had an exec session on this issue to advise the legal counsel what this council wanted to do with this case. There are court cases already happening and council isn't even weighed in on where we stand on it, which has opened us up. The information that anybody's going to use for a court case, whether they say, whether comments are made in a mayor manager meeting or in public on the dais and they end up getting used, that's up to all of us.
Are you pointing to me because you're talking to me? It's hard to know if you're trying to direct something at me or not.
No, if I was directing something at you, unlike Councilmember Yates, I would actually say, I would, I'm not, I'm not usually vague.
Let's, let's give the floor to Councilmember Barantone, please.
I just didn't know you were talking to me specifically.
No.
Is that it, Lorette?
But, no, I'm used to her interrupting me, it's okay, it's all right.
Apologies.
I want, I, I think that we ought to be getting legal advice on this case. We haven't had an executive session, we have not advised our council on this case and they're moving forward without us weighing in on this. And I don't believe that that's happened before and I'm very uncomfortable with it. And when I send an email back and say I am uncomfortable with what's been said and that I don't like the advice that I was given, that I didn't take that advice and then have, that I'm awaiting legal counsel and nobody contacts me to let me know what I'm supposed to do with what I was asked to do by the city manager, I guess, then, and I'm still waiting. So I think we ought to.
Are you requesting that Mr. Comer contact you?
That probably would have been a good idea. I would have thought that too.
Are you still requesting that?
I thought I copied you on it as well.
You did?
I did. I copied them on it as well, so.
Sounds like a council member would like a little bit of advice. Any idea when we might be able to have an exec session?
Session on this on October 3rd.
Thank you, sir.
But that's unfortunately after the court date and I don't think we should be having two court hearings and having an attorney hired and moving forward with something before we've already even told them what this council expects to do, given that the council in public prior to the lawsuit happening voiced that they wanted to relook at the ordinance. We've already set ourselves up for problems and we need to have some conversation with the attorney to say, hey, here's what's happened, here's what we'd like to do, here's how we'd like to see the case handled before it goes down the primrose path. Seems that that, the tail's wagging the dog here.
Mr. Comer might like to weigh in. Obviously, any scheduling matters will be picked up tomorrow at mayor manager meeting. Mr. Comer, with that in mind, would you like to make a comment?
Well, on the, let's see.
The microphone?
Can you share your mic, Lorette? Thank you.
Oh, and just on the study sessions, I don't think she was saying to get rid of the study sessions altogether, just to have them twice a month.
Yeah, exactly. Get rid of two of them, half of them.
On August 15th, we had a lengthy council meeting and during that meeting, there was a motion made to. a motion made to enact a moratorium with regard to the sexual offender ordinance. That motion did not pass. It was the, my intention to, because it, it came out of that meeting also, that we were going to discuss options with regard to the sexual offender ordinance at the next study session, which was that Monday, August 22nd. I spent the week preparing that, going through the old case, looking at the other ordinances. And that Thursday, the 18th, we were filed, we were never given a notice of a lawsuit. We were given a filing, a complaint of a lawsuit. And at that point, we had to respond. So it was given over to our insurance pool, SIRS, who assigned Mr. Rice to act as the city's counsel in this case. So things moved along much quicker than was expected and certainly there was no notice that any lawsuit was coming down the pike. It was a complete surprise to me as well as others. So to answer the question, could we have had a, an executive session or had a study session after the lawsuit or before the lawsuit? We could have had one before the lawsuit. We just didn't know there was a lawsuit coming. Could we have had one after it? No. We should never have had one after it. We needed to at least respond to the complaint and that's how it works. We had to respond to the complaint. And we have another hearing coming up on, I believe, the 28th at 1:00. And Mr. Rice has asked for an executive session so he can go over what the issues are. At this point, that's where we stand.
Is that prior? I just need to clarify that that's prior to the 28th then, or it's after?
It's after the 28th.
Well, that's what I have a problem with is that we do have time now to have an executive session prior to that court hearing so that we can know what we're doing.
I agree. I'll talk with Mr. Comer about scheduling tomorrow. I agree. You know, I, our preference, I think my preference too would be to have it.
He will not be in, he will not be available until the 3rd. That's why we scheduled it.
And we'll discuss scheduling matters tomorrow. I see some other potential possibilities on how we could have an exec session prior to the 3rd. If it's not possible, it's not possible, but I generally agree that probably we should be having an exec session prior to the hearing.
Just the only other thing I would ask, that I did in that email request legal counsel based on what, what happened with that filing and the direction that I was given by the city manager that I didn't take and part of my, I would like not to be hung out there that when I put an email out there and say, hey, I've got some confusion about what's going on here and I asked for the legal advice that I wish I would have gotten it. I would still like it, but it might need to be with Mr. Rice. I don't know.
It might be.
So.
But certainly Mr. Comer is available to you at any time. You know, you know his office number. You're welcome to contact him at any time and get legal advice.
I did contact him. I copied him on the email.
And again, you know, you guys need to, it sounds like getting communication with each other. You know, I'm not going to schedule that meeting for you. You know, you guys need to figure that out. You know, as far as the email from Mr. Keck, I, you know, did have some conversations with him. I agree that the direction that you should be heading is having conversations with our counsel to clarify what happened or what's going on so that they can communicate that with opposing counsel would be my suggestion. And I ultimately, I think that that's what we tried to discuss. Somehow it got put in the email a little bit differently, but the bottom line is that's the way I think it should be handled and I think you know that and I think that we all can agree on how to proceed on that.
I think I handled it appropriately. Yeah.
Thank you. Rita?
As far as the ex parte, I believe it is a non-issue. I believe that we all understand the importance of that. And I do believe part of the reason that this counsel has problems is they jump to conclusions and point the finger before they go to the person and ask them. And that's not just one person. That happens a lot and it just creates hard feelings in here and I think that we need to, to work on that. I do not believe ex parte has been, has occurred for what I'm going to weigh in on that. As far as praying in Jesus' name, the Supreme Court clearly made a ruling in May of 2014 that city councils can hold prayer even if it favors one religion over another. And I practice the Christian religion. I pray in Jesus' name. I will be doing that. And I am standing on my constitutional right to do that and I don't want any further discussion about this. As far as I'm concerned, it's the last discussion that we should have.
Rick?
I have been drastically looking for the email between Ms. Barrantyne and city manager. I think I took a different read on it. I thought Mr. Keck was asking you, did you, you know, she's alleging you said these things. Did you really say those? And if you didn't say those things, please correct her.
That was the argument.
That was what the email was all about. None of them were ever telling you to correct or to do something any different than that. I don't know what I did with the email, but I don't know how you read your, your version of it, but what I read was he was just giving you an opportunity to say, she said you said some pretty bad things and if you didn't say those, let her know you didn't say them and have her correct it. That's, that's exactly what that email was. So Mayor, you're in agreement with that. So that's, and I think that what the attorney said you said in that initial filing was extremely disturbing to me at least, maybe to no one else, but, and not saying you didn't have a right to say it, just some of that stuff, just, I just don't know where it came from. So, and that's why it did, it did, let me, it is my.
All right, let's, let's, let's give the floor to Rick.
It is my understanding.
I've got to have been stated again in public that I said it.
Okay, and we'll come back to you in a moment.
And hopefully we can find that email and the, because it just seems like she's taking it.
I, you know, I don't, I don't disagree that it could have been worked a little bit better.
The rudeness is just commonplace.
And I, I would prefer to drop the language of that specific email. I think manager.
This is beyond the pale that I have said numerous times and they're going to keep repeating.
We're just saying what the attorney said. And as for prayer, although I defend Ms. Russell's right to pray how she wants, if it's counsel's will, she is not, it's not her job to lead prayer. She wanted to. And if others want to lead prayer as well, I think they should lead prayer how they want as well. I reserve the right for her to pray how she wants to pray and I'm going to pray how I want to pray. So, you know, I, I don't have a problem saying God the Father or, or Jesus Christ. For me, it's not offensive either way, but I can see how it might be. I support her right to pray how she wants. The question is, in my opinion, is, is she counsel's representative for prayer? If she is, then we need to say, you can pray how you want. And if we're going to take, take it on, is, is other people going to do it? Then we need to, because for some reason that never got assigned. I, I don't know, you know, and I'm glad she does it. I, I enjoy that part of the service myself, so that's where I'm at on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You know, as far as the prayer piece, thank you Rita. You know, I totally respect your opinion or your right to pray however you like. You know, to Rick's point, I agree. I think maybe then we should just rotate through and then we can each pray how we like and then we feel like it's a little more accepting of everyone. Would that be acceptable policy to this counsel?
That's what I thought we'd agreed on the last time and then it just kind of continued the way it was and I think it's unfortunately put Ms. Russell in a bad place. And I, I feel badly that you don't ever want to have this conversation again because I hope we can continue to adjust and to respond to our citizens as they ask questions about them. We'd always be open to a conversation about this. It's, it's part of the fiber of communities, so, but I don't want to be ever blaming any one person for their perspective or not allowing them to have it. I think we've put ourselves in a strange place with this. I think the conversation we had the last time about it is we wanted it to be a bit more open to different perspectives and rotating through, I think is the best way. I mean, I would probably pray more like her in a prayer setting myself, so, but I would love to use one of the cards. I can do that too. I've done that in other settings. So I'm glad to do that to help kind of break it up from all of us and allow for everybody to have a voice in it.
Thank you. Did everybody really, is everybody indicating they want to talk?
I was, but.
Okay. You'll pull it back now.
Fine.
Thank you. I'm going to go with Steve and then I'll give Rita a shot in here again one more time before we conclude.
Well, you know, if we choose to rotate the prayer, we choose to rotate the prayer. I, I, I kind of feel that as counsel, we need to have a policy on how we handle this prayer situation because one, we're talking as a body, not as individuals up there. We're representing all, not a specific group. And yes, the Supreme Court said you can pray any way you want. I understand that. But are we doing the right thing is really the question. So, you know, I, I will abide by the wishes of the majority of the counsel on this. I just felt that we needed to at least have a discussion in that issue. When it comes to me being told that I will be filed with a lawsuit for liable, you know, the council member that said that needs to be aware of that we are public, we are public figures and liability rules are slightly different for that. And frankly, I never said your name. I never said the court case. You're the one that outed yourself on that. So I, I didn't do anything wrong. I simply repeated what was in a court document and there you go. I'm done.
I know we've got two more speakers who want to talk and I would like to try to conclude the meeting at those, with those. Rita?
Actually, I'll just cancel what I had to say.
Okay, appreciate that. Lorette?
The legal counsel that I sought, felt that what was written by Mr. Keck was pretty clear in advising me to contact somebody that I shouldn't be contacting. I can see it however you want, but that's what it seemed to be advising me to do. And now that we've established that I was the one you were talking about, I think that's been made pretty clear. There was some pretty severe, there were.
Sorry, let's keep it to Lorette here.
Self-control.
Black kettle calling it black.
Sorry, guys, let's, let's not deteriorate. We've got a couple of minutes here left in this meeting. Please honor the floor for Lorette here.
The, the lawsuit itself made some very severe accusations against some, a council member and that, that was the impetus for why the filing happened, why the court case was filed. And I would never go ahead and, and take that, even though I can go back on a tape and listen to those things, to go ahead and do anything to a court case that's been filed to damage anything that's going on with that court case, even if I've got a record of it and it's on, it's on a tape and it's public. When you take information that you don't know whether it's true or not and you continue to act as if it is, then, I mean, I would assume that Mr. Gillett would probably agree that maybe not everything that she says in all of her filings are accurate or worded correctly. I, I don't know. But nothing's been established as to whether I said or did any of this because none of you have ever even asked me and I will continue to ask for the legal advice that I have asked for several weeks ago for this whole situation to find out how it should be handled best. So I would expect that once that question's been put out there, that you stop saying publicly that I did anything until you know whether that's the case or not and when we've received legal counsel or not. So if you want to continue to damage this, go ahead, you have the right to. I'm asking you not to. I've already asked for the legal advice. I asked for it in writing. I asked for it tonight. How best to handle this and that's how I'll proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, I think we've, we had some conversations here about prayer issues and ex parte potential issues, about the study session. I would suggest to this group that the ex parte communications discussion might be a topic for our retreat. Have council members weighed in on the scheduling of the retreat?
I'm not going to be able to do it all day.
You're not going to be able to do it?
Not all day, no.
I mean, can you do it another day?
I could do it a partial day. I can't even be here four hours without getting into a freaking, no. I'd rather do this in smaller pieces. That's more helpful, you know? I've been in, you know, in other sessions where it's just, you go too long, you just don't care after a while. I don't want to get to a point where I don't care. I would love to do this, but I would love to do it in chunks and if they don't want to do it in chunks, then I, I don't want to do it. I cannot be here eight hours and talking and it's just, you know, and wondering why. And then come in, yeah, no. No, thank you.
Are there, are others unwilling to do this?
I wait in. I cannot come on the 26th at that time. The earliest I could come would be 4:30 and I, and then I told the officer, well, maybe I can make it four, but I cannot come like that during the day. I would prefer, I mean, we have no trouble going from 5:30 to midnight. I don't know why we can't just make it an evening chunk. I would prefer we not do it like that. I've said that before. I actually think we should look at a different provider if this is, if this is the issue. I think we could find something else and do, break it up because it sounds like a number of us who have full-time day jobs are struggling with trying to figure this out and wonder about the value of it. And I think you want a group that comes wanting to do it and feeling good about the timing of it, not bucking against it and doing it in the way that we want to do it.
Again, I guess what I'm.
I cannot do the 26th. I have major conflicts.
Steve?
I, I, I'm in the same boat when it comes to such large blocks of time, especially during the week. I, I have a business run. I have people to manage and frankly, you know, several of us have mentioned that we really feel that taking smaller chunks and working on, at skills versus just shoving it down somebody's throat, that's my wording, not others, that it would be a better scenario. And if this particular person is unable to provide what counsel's needing to meet their, their schedule needs and learning styles and stuff, we probably need to look at a different individual.
Well, it sounds like you guys are bringing up two different issues. One is scheduling and one is the commitment to being willing to doing a certain amount of hours. So is your issue.
In one chunk.
Is your issue that both or one or the other?
Well, okay, it kind of ties it together, both of them.
Okay, fair enough.
Because of the sheer chunk of time, you know? So if he can't provide the service in the way that we need it, then we do need somebody else.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm hearing, you know, counsel not wanting to participate in this process the way that has been outlined by our expert.
You have not heard that from everyone.
Agreed. And I would hope that it's not from all of us, you know, I think that.
I think we made it difficult when we took Saturday off the table for this, but I work, I work a lot. Anytime that we can set it up, any chunk of time, and I do think that a bigger chunk of time would probably be more beneficial, so.
Again, I asked this group to sort of submit to the expert recommendations. The experts made the recommendations and now we're wanting to buck against that. I, I'm a little, you know, I don't like the, I don't know, I'm a little put off by the idea that council members, you know, don't want to put in the time to be able to make a better outcome for our community. I am understanding of that and I will ask the city manager to contact them and see if we can work on a smaller chunk and work on scheduling again. If they are unwilling to do that, I suppose we need to look at another provider. Again, you know, I don't know, Linda, if you've contacted this person, you know.
At that time, but I do want to say one thing if I can.
Again, I'm just disappointed.
I, I don't, I don't think that what we agreed to the other night was doing an eight-hour chunk. Matter of fact, they made it really.
We agreed to submitting to the expert, I thought.
No, we submitted to the idea. And I said I wanted to talk to this particular provider. We had three on the list. Others would do it differently. I have not had a chance to talk to them. This is start of term for me. It's insane. I had a student die this weekend, so I'm not in the best place to be doing all this stuff right now. I was clear about my Saturdays. It's just the way, I hadn't expected this. If I'd known in, in June that we needed to set aside some weekends, I would have. But I don't think the commitment, Joe, the other night, was actually to the eight hours. It was to the idea, it was to working on this. That's what you asked us. Go back and listen to the tape. It was working on this. That's what it was and I said, yes.
Said submitting to the experts' recommendations and submitting to the process.
Submitting to working on this was what it was. Well, regardless.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Regardless, I'm unable to come on the 26th at that time. You can certainly do it without me or I'll come at four.
I think that's our preference. You know, again, I think we're going to try to work with the group. And if we can find something that works for this group, then great. If we can't, then we can't. But we'll bring, we're going to ask Mr. Keck to bring this forward and see what, what the alternatives might be with scheduling and with other people if he doesn't want to do it that way. Because I hear a fairly clear consensus on that.
I think even two four-hour chunks would be, would be adjustable and easier to schedule if they're open to that.
Yep. Agreed. And it sounds like evenings is the preference. Weekday evening sounds like the preference.
Monday nights would be my preference, especially since some people think we don't need to do study sessions. So, let's do it. I'm serious. I'm not being, I think that's what we should do. Let's use it then like that. So, we've, we've got, I have one other question, though. Is this, is this an open meeting? Are these open meetings or are they?
I think anytime we're together talking policy, it probably has to be.
Is it policy or is it team building? Is it group work? That's the other question I have for it.
I think it would get into a pretty gray area. I, I would lean towards notice posting. You know, I think that, you know, it's not necessary that we record the contents, you know? We could, we could provide minutes. We could retreat. That's why I was, I was honestly thinking off-site would be best for this group personally.
And taped off-site.
That's what he, that's what our expert said as well.
Is that what you're saying? Taped off-site?
Non-taped off-site. I mean, I think the requirements of the open meetings would be, what, minutes? Correct? Mr. Comer?
I'll look at the open meetings.
I believe so. But, you know, so I, you know, I think that we could, we could comply with the law and, and, you know, provide a little bit different atmosphere that might, you know, help us out a little bit. Just to wrap this up again, it sounds like we're, we've got some direction on that. I think that ex parte thing is something that we can kind of discuss there. As far as the prayer issue, do we have consensus to move towards a rotation? Seeing.
Do you want to do a rotation or no? Are you feeling like it was?
I mean, I think if that's what the council decides that they want to do, that's fine. I mean, I just, the trouble that I had the very first time that we talked about the prayer issue, there was one council member that I felt very personally attacked. Most of the people were very general and I appreciated that. But I did feel personal attacks that night.
I'm sorry to hear that. And certainly, our focus is not, I think, to villainize you in any way through this process. I respect, you know, your right to, you know, express your own religious beliefs and your own rights there. But again, I, in deference, I think what Councilmember Yates was getting at, you know, I think if we rotated, perhaps it would be a little more diversity and, and seem better for the public. And that's more why I'm worried about, you know, I know it's legal to do it the way we're doing it. But again, my preference is not just because it's legal to do it, but to do what we think is in the best interest of our community. Do we have consensus to move towards a rotation or do we want to have another discussion on this?
Yes.
Rotation?
Rotation.
There it is. So, I, I would like to, I don't know if we need a formal policy on that. I don't think so. I think that we can just agree to rotate as a group. Is that fair? And as far as the study session issue, did we have consensus on that one way or another? Are folks who are wanting to get rid of the study sessions still wanting to get rid of the study sessions?
I'm fine with considering it in a few months again because if we can get by without them, I would love it. But I just don't, you know, I.
Yeah. I just want to clarify. I think what Councilmember Russell was suggesting is not.
Cut them in half.
Not reducing them, but just having like maybe longer ones on every other Monday, not like cutting any out, but just.
Well, you're cutting every other Monday.
Well, I think because a lot of times in the study sessions before council meetings, we get cut off and we don't get to continue to the discussion that we had planned. I think that's, is that where.
Did you check on the charter issue? Was it, did it name the time or no?
Not a charter.
Yeah. Okay. Great.
Do we start at six for the?
Yeah. That's, we could move to six then with the public meeting.
And if we have, if there's a need for the city to bring stuff, city manager?
We do a little more under choice.
We have our choice.
We're talking starting at six for study sessions?
No, regular meetings. Study sessions, only study session nights already, you know, obviously start at six.
So, you're saying.
We're talking about pushing up the regular meeting in lieu of a study session if that were the will of council.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion. I wouldn't mind.
My, my question is, is will we be able to cover the topics that we need to cover?
You know, it would require us to push back several topics that we've got scheduled in study sessions for the next several months. And so, you know, in my mind, you know, can we cover some of that ground under choice in some areas? I think we could have that discussion tomorrow and try to fit in as many, you know, not, again, it's going to slow us down. How much? I don't know.
Currently, I don't think it's a good idea. I think we, we need to plan. If we're going to go that route, we need to plan, start working through what we have on the table and then start reducing it.
What about this? Now that I know that some members are really seriously considering this, maybe what we can do is have a conversation about it tomorrow, see what that looks like and have a more, more meaningful discussion about this next week. Is that acceptable or do you want to weigh in now?
That works for me. I was just going to suggest maybe if we change it, try it for a couple of months, see how much we, ground we can cover and then be open to changing it back.
Or another alternative would be the two of you figure out what are hot and with the manager and the attorney, what are the hot issues? We've got some things that are timely and need to be done. I would hate to do this and then slow everything up again.
Agreed. That's what we'll look at tomorrow.
You know what's going down the list. I can't even think of what's on the docket for the future. But I would be really concerned if we cut those things off and then.
Agreed.
We're all frustrated again because we're not getting done what we think we should get done. I'd still think that our management of the inside regular meeting is where we get ourselves caught up.
I'm going to suggest we stick with our current schedule until we have a mayor-manager meeting. We talk about that possibility and have a more meaningful discussion about what the impacts of that decision might be for this group, okay? Is that acceptable to everybody here? Great. Manager's choice?
Could I, could I read the email that was being talked about the whole time here over and over and over again? I mean, maybe it's not worth it, but it's, it's certainly not.
She sent it to council.
Mayor Jefferson and City Manager Keck. This is from Lorette, Lorette Berantine, Berantine. Sorry, I always do that because I have a friend saying differently than you do.
Is it necessary to read this onto the record right now?
After several attempts to contact the mayor. What?
Is this necessary to read on the record right now?
Well, I feel like it was being said that you asked very specifically for.
If you want to read it on the record, I don't have any objection.
Yeah. I mean, it's open, right?
It is.